February 7th, 2018 to order at 6:00 PM. Our roll call, please.
Mayor Copeland.
Here.
James Burden.
Here.
Ken Jones.
Here.
Jeff Gard is absent. Robert Beadle.
Here.
Ann Schaefer.
Here.
David Allison.
Here.
And James Weiss.
Here.
That's the Quarmoff Council.
Okay, the work session at this time is for the UBS Financial City Investments. And I'd like to welcome UBS staff. If you could just, if you want to sit by this microphone up here so the councilman online, you can just drag your chair up there. There, we might have an extra. Alan.
Well, I just wanted to go with that and say that, you know, based upon some previous conversations and some information that we had gotten, the question was really directed at rates of return and risk. So we went through a couple of steps to get to this point, and we've invited Buck and Chad Adams from UBS Financial Services. They've been with us for a while, representing the city, and they're here to do a presentation for you and field any questions regarding our investments. At this point in time, the bulk of those investments are the permanent fund, so that's the majority of what we're talking about here. So.
Okay.
Thank you very much. This is Buck Adams. My son Chad is my business partner for the last 12 years. I have 23 years of financial advisor with UBS for the last 12 years. And we started engaged with the city of Cordova originally in 2009 when an RFP process went out looking for the opportunity for the city to do something other than have all their funds in the Alaska municipal lead pool. And at that time, the municipal lead pool, which was, I believe, about $250 million at the time, is a very short-term, let's call it almost, it's a money market equivalent for municipalities. And the returns were frankly based strictly on short-term interest rates extremely low. So the city was looking to do something else to see if they could actually increase improved returns over time with taking a minimal amount of risk. It was a very lengthy process, helping the city with the, and the city attorneys with the investment policy statement that was created, which is something that's in the city charter now. And the decision was, at the time, rather than embedding in the charter the investment allocations, which would mean we would have to every year go through and review and change the charter, the decision by the council was to utilize instead an annual resolution that we'd come present a recommended asset allocation to be adopted annually. So it allowed it to be changed in that fashion. So it took a long time to finally get where we started historically was we came from cash, very slowly into extremely short-term government bonds, and then over time began to add small amounts of equities, stocks to the portfolio, and began to expand the type of bonds or fixed income that was available to the city. And so in August of 2010, we still were essentially in cash, and we began to move slowly into a more rounded, diversified portfolio over the next few years. So early on, essentially, returns are basically cash, short-term bond returns, and then we began to pick up some equity, some stock returns over time. And this past year, I'd like Chad, it's all in your workbooks, but just to kind of give you a recap of, we were very happy in 2017 where the small amount of equities the portfolio holds comparatively speaking, and the returns the permanent fund received, we were very happy to be able to bring that use to council. So Chad, we just want to recap.
Yeah, absolutely. So the two portfolios that we have on deposit are the permanent fund and then smaller account with about a million dollars in it, that is the central treasury portfolio. Each of those has to be invested differently. Central treasury cannot own equities. It can't own any type of high-yield fixed income, if you will. It's basically a, we want as much stability as possible, so we keep it into higher quality fixed income investments. The permanent fund had about 25% in equities last year, about 60% in fixed income, and then the remainder in alternative investments, which are not stocks or bonds, so they get classified as alternatives. Last year, the equities returned 25%. The indexes came out around 22, so we're happy with that excess return. The broad fixed income market returned about 3.5%. The city's fixed income returned about 6.5%, which we're happy with there and actually produced a lower overall volatility. And then the alternatives, and that's really when we start looking into hedge funds. The hedge fund market returned about 6% last year. The city's alternative investments returned 10.5. So we're happy with those results, but the main thing that we're satisfied with is not increasing the city's overall risk. And that's something I wanted us to be able to have a conversation about tonight, is risk, because when we start thinking about returns, now, return is great. Return is the reward that you receive for taking on a given risk. We have to be able to balance that and be aware of what those risks are, because when we look at stocks and we say, oh, the stocks returned 22%, that's fantastic. But generally in equities, this is not a claim or a guarantee or anything like that, when we look at downside, we look at a 2008, or a tech wreck, or the '70s, or any one of those risk events, what we're accepting with stocks is about a 50% downturn. At some point in time, you don't know why, you don't know when, anyone that says that they do, then that's, we've been doing this a long time, we've worked with a lot of smart people, we don't. But that's the risk acceptance when we go into that. And so when we look at what stocks do, and we say, well, I want, we want more of that, we have to balance that against the potential risk and either accept those risks or reject them, or establish a level that is acceptable, that the city can live with.
So last year, net to the city was about $922,000, the portfolios that we manage. As Chad said, we got those returns with substantially less exposure, less risk. The way we define risk is volatility. It's either, it can be good or it can be bad. You can have good risk, you know, you're expecting something, you go up 5%, it goes up 15, well, it's more volatile, and in that case, it was a riskier portfolio. Somehow, it worked out for you. Conversely, you're expecting it to go up 5, and it goes down 3, well, there's risk there, okay? We weren't expecting, we thought we'd go up 5, we went down 3. So we have to take, take those things into account. And one of the significant challenges that we faced over the years is the amount of withdrawals from the original portfolio that we had. I mean, there was a bond, a school bond portfolio and everything. We started with about 25, 27 million. And about 75% of the money now is no longer, you know, with us. And there have been times in the past, you know, 2010 or '11, well, we don't know when it's going to happen, we'll get a call that says, hey, Buck and Chad, we weren't expecting you to take money out, but we've had something, a critical issue's come up with the city, and we need $1.4 million by Tuesday. And so we have to figure out where we're going to go in the portfolio. We can't afford to be down 20, 30, 40, 50%. And when somebody says, oh, you should be getting a 10% return, well, that means, as Chad said, if that's the return you want, you have to be willing to be down by half at some point. During 2007 and '08, the S&amp;P 500, the broad U.S. market, from peak to trough, was down 51%. 51%. If you're not spending any money, that doesn't, you know, and you're patient, you'll recover. But if you're spending money during these downturns, it's almost impossible to dig your way back out of a hole.
Or if you lose your nerve, because it can be tough to, you know, to have public funds and to experience a loss like that and then to stick with it. And that's something we would care not to go through. We assume the council would feel the same way.
Yeah, it was a miserable time, miserable time in '07, '08. I went through the tech wreck to 2000, 2002. When clients are calling, they're terrified, and understandably so. You know, the world's ending, film 11, you know, what are we going to do? Bury our coins in the backyard type of thing. And keeping clients from exercising their animal spirits is one of, I think, most important things that good advisors bring to the table, because it's staying in long enough and staying in the game and lasting through recovery, recovery, that's most important. So if people bail out, then they have no opportunity for the recovery. So unexpected distributions, or even expected distributions, where we're told, okay, we're going to need a billion dollars, you know, within six months or whatever.
That's no longer money you can take risks with.
Yeah, we've got to manage that risk, that we have to be able to give you that money when you call for it and not tell you, well, that million you want, it's worth, that's $700,000 right now, or $500,000. And then we have to.
Can you bring the loudspeaker just a little closer? Excuse me for interrupting.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. Generally, I'm never told I can't be, I'm pretty loud. Sorry about that. So what happens is that we can't be in a position, and if you look at the distributions, I think the city has taken out about $8 million from the UBS accounts in the past two years. So we have to be able to be able to provide that money, same time try and give you returns that are above what you would have expected if you were just in fixed income or if you were in the Alaska municipal lead pool. We calculated roughly, from the time we received the assets from the city in 2009, bearing in mind we stayed in bonds for a long time till we could finally get some stocks and other things in the portfolio, that the municipal lead pool would have returned, or based on treasury bill rate, about $100,000. About $100,000. As of year-end, we're up net over $2.8 million for the city. So you compare those two sets of figures, and we've been able to meet the distribution demands and at the same time add almost $3 million to the pot for the city, net, $2.8 million. So we've, you know, is it pure stock market returns? No. But that's not what the city's charter says, or isn't what the asset allocation model is for the city. We have to be able to deal with and manage risk, and frequently for us, we don't know if risk is coming from the markets, or does an unexpected risk come upon us from a distribution request that we weren't expecting? They're both risky events. And a lot of, a lot of times, this is an analogy I've used before. I'm a risk taker. You know, I was a Marine, I was a cop, I was a skydiver, I was a pilot, you know, scuba diver. I've done more stupid things in my life than I can share the same shake-stick at, but you don't drag other unwilling participants along with you to do those things. And so when we manage our own investments, our own 401Ks and things like that, you know, it's like being a stock car driver on the weekend. You can just go flat out, you know, I'm going to just try and knock the cover off the ball. You've got that option. It's your money to lose. But on Monday morning, if you're a school bus driver in your, in your regular day job, you can't take those kind of risks. And we look at it as if our position is that, that when the council sits and you make decisions, you're making decisions for the entire community, obviously, of Cordova. And so we have to be able to respond more in that tempered response of how we manage your assets. So there are times where, yeah, the stock market's going to outperform, there are times when the bond market may outperform. But our job is to be able to meet the demands, to get you a decent rate of return, to try and mitigate the downside. That's really where our focus is, is not to hurt you. And in, in talking about that, and I apologize to those of you on the phone, we found this chart that we'd created years ago just before we left the office and thought we would bring it with us. And we'll make sure, Madam Clerk, to get you a digital copy to be able to send out. But for those of you that have a copy of this, that you've been looking at, wondering how does it relate to what we're talking about, I'm going to ask Chad to go through this piece that we created for, for our clients a few years ago. It was called "The Sequence of Returns." And when and how you receive your returns is one of the most critical things that can happen to you. For a retiree, if you go into retirement and you have, your first couple of years are bad drawdown years, and you're spending money, you've got a really deep hole to climb out of. If towards the end of your life, towards the end of retirement, you have your bad years, well, your portfolio sustained you, and at the end, you have some trouble. But you only have a few more years perhaps in retirement to worry about. So the sequence of returns Chad's going to go through, and then be happy to open, open it up for questions on it. I know it looks a little confusing. Chad, take away.
So with the sequence of returns, what you're trying to account for is the fact that we can't control the markets, and we don't know what returns are going to be coming or when. So all we did with this chart is we took a $8 million portfolio, and we said, if we get this S&amp;P 500 return from 1989 to 2008, the average return is 8.43%. That's in the blue line. The red line is the exact same returns, just flipped in reverse. So starting in 2008 and going to 2007, just going, the bizarro return, if you will, just going backwards. If you're not adding any money or taking any money out, you end up at the exact same place. It doesn't matter the order in which you receive those returns. However, if you go to the next slide, we looked at this from an accumulation standpoint. If we were adding 5% of the portfolio, which $8 million, it's $400,000 a year, and adjusting that amount up for inflation every year with growth, we can see that the lines start to diverge. The blue line is still those same returns from 1989 to 2008. The average is still 8.43%. But you can see it actually underperformed the red line. In this case, the red line got its bad returns first, and when you're adding money, that's an advantage to you. So when you're adding funds in and you have time, volatility, I mean, the market moving up and down, is opportunity, because you're buying low and you're buying early. So in this example, having those bad returns early and you're putting money away is an advantage. And then the final chart.
And this final chart, this is our situation here, okay? So now we're at, we're at reality of what can happen to either an individual investor or an institutional investor such as yourselves. This is, this is disaster bill, if I paraphrase it. If the sequence of returns gets out of whack. Go ahead, Chad.
So all this is, is starting with an $8 million portfolio, same portfolio, and instead of adding $400,000 inflation-adjusted per year, we're pulling it out. We're spending the money. That if you're an individual, that's retirement. If you're an institution, it's operations, it's projects, whatever it might be. Same returns, just flipped. If we get the, you know, for lack of a better term, the good return times where we end with bad returns, well, we put in $8 million, we took out $10 million, our account's worth $22 million. Fantastic, great. However, if we got our bad returns early, we ran out of money in 16 years, and we only pulled out $8 million, essentially what we put in. That's the importance of when you, with volatility and generating income or spending, it's important to account for those on the front end, because the math changes when you're adding money or not putting any money or taking any money out. The math is different from if you're tapping that portfolio for assets.
If you lose 10% on your portfolio, you only got to make back 11% to get to break even. If you make back 10%, now you're at 99 cents instead of a dollar. You lose 20%, you got to make 25%. You lose 50%, you have to get 100% return on your remaining, you know, we have 50 cents left. To get it back to a dollar, you got to get 100% rate of return to get back to break even. And in 2001, '02, during the tech wreck, the NASDAQ, the technology index, was down 75%. You have to get 300% rate of return to get back to break even, because you've only got 25 cents left, and you've got to build it back to a dollar. So this, this entire idea of the sequence of returns and how much of a loss you can take and how easy it is to dig yourself out of a 5% loss versus a 20 or 25% loss, and especially if you're in that 20% down stroke, and suddenly you get a demand for, we need a million too, because Snobagden came along again, heaven forbid, but, you know, things like that. So that, that for us, controlling the risk is the most important thing we do in the portfolio, and we run all of your portfolio against some of the most sophisticated risk engines on the planet. Chad works closely with some of the largest asset management firms in the world to be able to have direct access to the mathematics they use to manage their own portfolios, BlackRock, Pemco, Janus, all of these companies that you may know their names. He works with, directly with their risk managers when we build a portfolio and run it through the system to say, how much risk is this portfolio taking? How volatile is it likely to be? What type of returns might we expect? So it's not a wing and a prayer for us. We never approached a situation like that. We use the math, we use the science, we use the history of the markets and different asset classes when we design these portfolios. So there's a lot more to it, a lot more to it than, than you see on the surface. Our job is for you to look at the council, great, we made $900,000 last year. Wouldn't you guys, thank you, guys, that's, that's great. We went through a lot of blood, sweat, and tears to manage the portfolios in such a way we're able to, you know, we had a good year. That's, that's all, that's, you know, all I got to say about it. At this point, I'd like to open it up for some questions.
We wanted to keep this as conversational as possible. Sorry about the diatribes there.
Any questions, council?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Beadle.
Yeah. The YouTube has got about a minute or two delay, so it's kind of, I think I watch and try to listen to it. What's, just a couple of things, is what are the fees? How do you, how do you charge for managing the city's portfolio?
Sure. On the, so there's two fixed income portfolios that you have. Both are managed in what's called the quality income suite, and that's in central treasury, and then you also have another one inside of the permanent fund. Those are billed at 0.5% per year on the portfolio. It's billed quarterly, shows up on all the statements. And also, whenever we quote returns for the city, it's all net of those expenses. Then you have a moderate conservative world allocation portfolio inside of the permanent fund that has equities, fixed income, and alternative investments. That's at 0.75.
And so, we don't, you know, UBS, that's a fee UBS charges, that's not what Chad and I get paid. But that's the fee that the firm charges to custody the assets, do all the reporting, everything else that goes with managing portfolios. And as a firm, the UBS is one of the world's largest wealth management firms, and we have priced this portfolio extremely competitively for size and cost of managing the assets. We compare ourselves against what the industry does, and we have substantially well underneath what would be an industry average for managing the money. We pay all our own expenses to come out here. You know, city or the UBS doesn't give us an expense account or anything else like that. It's all on us. So we think we're very competitively priced, Councilman Beadle, and as Chad said, the numbers we quote, those are net-net to the city.
Okay, so.
Is there, if I may, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
Is there any additional commissions, or is that, if that's the total fee, there's no other fee?
That, that is, yeah, we exercise a fee-for-service model. So if the portfolio goes down, our compensation goes down. If portfolio does better, if you do a lot better, we do a little better. We don't charge any commissions to buy or sell. And importantly, really importantly, and this is something that I, you know, I want to drive home, we use institutional class shares, institutional class mutual fund shares. In other words, if you're the biggest pension fund in the country and you go to invest in this mutual fund, pick one of the funds, you get what's called institutional class share. So we don't get any revenue that comes back from the mutual fund company or anything like that. What happens is those are the lowest-cost shares available. And some of the mutual funds that you have have normally $5 million buy-ins. In order to invest in that fund, you got to put $5 million in that one fund. Because of UBS's strength and arrangements, we're, we're able to put you in that same fund. If you have $200,000, we can invest in that fund. So we, we pick very competitively priced funds. We get, Councilman Beadle, we receive no additional compensation above a bet, nothing that comes back through the back door or anything else like that. We charge a fee-for-service model and not commissions.
No, I wouldn't have did anything like that. I hope that wasn't a, that was just a part of the conversation and not a, there was none of that intended. It was just to understand the, the cost of managing the portfolio. And just, you know, it's good to see you guys here on YouTube. But is there any kind of books and stuff that we could help understand this a little better? You know, if you, you know, say you're going with a new customer or something via, you know, to understand what equities and different terms mean in your report.
You have a favorite?
I mean, we, we have so many. Amazon. Yeah. I, if you would be, if the council would be open to it, we would love to come down and do a workshop, an educational workshop, and go through all these different pieces. And I would be more than happy to walk anyone through that's interested, more than just investor education, but actually how we go through and manage these portfolios and the kinds of decisions that we make. And we'd love to come down for a couple days, if that's how long it takes. That would be, that would be fun for us.
We love it. Our investor education is our favorite thing. Not, I look, I'm realizing a couple days. No, that's just Chad talking. We can, we can whittle it down.
A decent, high-level book is called "The Art and Science of Portfolio Management." I think it's only a couple hundred pages. It, good, high-level information, not digging too far into the weeds, but do you just, you know, about constructing a portfolio, more than just looking at, you know, stocks and those kinds of things, but really just, this is, this is how you build a portfolio, these are the kind of considerations you have. I think that's a good starting place.
What was the name of that book again, please?
Oh, sure. "The Art and Science of Portfolio Management."
And we, we have a very user-friendly presentation that we can do. We'd love to open it to the public or do it for council. You know, we, a couple times before when we were down here, we held 22 individual meetings with municipal employees. We came down for two days and met with the city's employees one-on-one to discuss whatever issues they had or questions that they had.
We'd love to do it again.
Yeah, that was fun for us.
I just wanted to confirm, so the, in the summaries of the sources of portfolio values for 2017, those investment returns, then you said, are net of net?
Net-net.
Okay, okay.
Now, when we say net-net, some of those gains are going to be realized gains, and some are going to be unrealized gains. There are going to be mutual funds that we bought at $10, and now they're at $12, as an example, but we haven't sold that fund. There may be, there may be distributions that come off of that fund that in fact are net-net paid out. So it's a combination of realized and unrealized gains. It's like having a rental house. You may have some equity appreciation in the house, that's an unrealized gain. At the same time, you have rental income coming in every month, that's a realized gain.
So the, the fees are taken out of the gains when they're realized?
So that's just assessed on a, on a quarterly basis?
Okay.
And so it just comes out, so that's when we say.
Portfolio, then?
Yes.
Okay.
And so that aligns the incentives to where it's our incentive, you know, remove duty on our country, let's remove that from the equation. It is our incentive to grow the account as much as possible and to not give back too much, because we get, we take pay cuts. When the portfolio depreciates, that directly affects our compensation. We feel that's a fair way to align, to align the incentives.
And I'm sorry, those are assessed quarterly? And I'm sorry, those are assessed quarterly, you said?
Correct.
Okay. Is that about how often you balance the portfolios or is that just a constant process?
I'm sorry, can?
Is that how often you balance the portfolios or is that just kind of a continuous?
That's, that's a continuous process whether we, we balance it or not or make a trade. It's just part of the, the process.
We are constantly analyzing, we analyze hundreds of, of investment options per year. Uh, so it's a constant process for us. This guy, he's frightening.
Okay, we, that's, that's fine for me. I want to give council a chance to answer more questions. We just have about 12 more minutes. So, uh, other questions, counsel, UBS?
Uh, Mr. Mayor? Is somebody else?
Does anybody else have questions? Uh, Councilman Beadle?
Hey, just a hot seat one here. What do you think the correction did for our, um, this, uh, for our portfolio? Did it change much? I see this is December 31st or something. Would it affect earnings up to now or?
So the?
Earnings.
So the equity, the big sell-off in the equity market really doesn't have that much of an impact, uh, on the portfolio as only about 25% is in there. Where the real change has come from, and this is quiet underneath the surface, and this is the kinds of things we have to pay attention to, is the bond market. Oh, go ahead. Oh, there we go. Uh, is, is the bond market. And the high-grade bond market on the year is down about a percent and a half. And that's including interest and everything from fixed income. Uh, the equity market is essentially flat. It'll probably be down a little bit today. Uh, we were essentially flat on the year, uh, coming down here. And granted, we don't pay too much attention, uh, to what goes on, on the, the day-to-day with the equity markets. That tends to sort out over time. Uh, but we are accounting for those risks. And that's part of what we were discussing earlier about the importance of not having too much in risk assets, is that that could have been a 7% decline in 100% equity portfolio. That's, that's, that's a big move, uh, in a, in a matter of a week. Uh, we think that this is just, you know, stepping back from it a bit, Councilman Beadle, is that this is ultimately healthy for the market. 2017 was what we would call the perfect year for the S and P 500. There wasn't a single down month. That's, that's not how it's supposed to work. Uh, you need risk. You need volatility because what happens is that complacency sets in and investors, when complacency sets in, expectations start to grow, risk-taking increases, and that's when people start using leverage. And prudent uses of leverage are great. You can actually use leverage to reduce overall risk. We can talk about that in the portfolio construction class. But when people start increasing their overall risk, they borrow from their home or for an institutional account, they, uh, you know, our hedge fund starts to go 40 times leverage or those kinds of things, that's when we start to get nervous. And so when we see corrections like this, it's much needed, it was long overdue.
When we saw people buying Bitcoin using their credit cards at $20,000 per coin, we're like, this is not going to end well for them. And sure enough, down around six, seven thou, who knows? You know, 20 minutes from now, it'll be whatever it is, but no, you don't own any Bitcoin, but it's just an example of animal spirits run amok. And that's the kind of thing we watch out for. We watch out for it as an opportunity because let me tell you what happens. When the weak hands run from this market, and they will, they started the other day, if we're down 15, 20%, a decent correction, we desperately need that correction in the stock market. We need to shake out the, the weak hands, as it were, the people who won't stick it out. And that's when we step in, at that point, and we'll rebalance the portfolio. We'll step right in there and say, okay, we can buy it cheaper now, rebalance portfolio. So those are opportunities for you, for us, to be able to step in there and take advantage of weakness, uh, in the marketplace. And that's what we have to say. We would love to come down and do a class.
Other questions, counsel?
Oh.
Uh, Alan.
We talk a lot about the city's permanent fund and, and it becomes our well to dip into when we have issues. Um, just for my own edification of the, we'll use the permanent fund as the example of the, on page nine of your portfolio value, you have listed 8 million and change on the value of that. At this particular time, am I reading this correctly, that only a small portion of that is cash?
Of the permanent fund, yes.
Yes. So the value of our fund is invested in a variety of things, like, you know, in your life, it could be your car, your home, you know, the tools in your garage. All of those things are the total value of your per, your permanent fund, which could be then liquidated, but not necessarily at the value of 8 million. Am I correct in that?
That's correct. It could fluctuate. And that's where we want to account for that risk as much as we can.
Yeah. So it's not a pile of cash of $8 million at this point?
No, no.
Okay.
No. And if we, if a call did come in, a request for funds, uh, that's where we have to get strategic in our thinking of what's going on in the marketplace. Uh, so coming back to Councilman Beadle's question regarding the recent equity correction, if you needed, I'm making up a number, $500,000, we wouldn't source that from the equity portion of the portfolio. We would go into either the fixed income or the cash piece, uh, to have, to allow those equities to recover. And so that comes on, uh, it depends on what's going on. Uh, if the request came in at the end of 2017, when stocks had a good run like they did, we would source that from the equities.
So last year, to, to balance our budget, we asked for 876,000 in cash. And then later on, we had, uh, two other requests totaling 1.2 million, 1.3 million, I think, and it looks like 1.368 million. So in order to, to get that cash, what did you have to do?
Now, fortunately, everything we use is fully liquid. Uh, so I had to just run some math to, one, make sure that when I went in and liquidated, that I didn't put the portfolio out of whack. Uh, also, we have a side portfolio in the permanent fund. I mentioned that there's the, a world allocation, moderate conservative portfolio. We also have a quality income portfolio in there, that is boring fixed income as we can make while still trying to generate a compelling return. Uh, so for example, uh, similar bond strategies in 2017 returned about 2 to 3%, somewhere in there. Uh, quality income returned five and a half for the city net. If there was a request right now for 500,000 or 876, that's the portfolio that we would go to. And that's part of why we instilled that piece, was to have that balance, that piece of stability, to where if there was an unfortunate market event and we had bad timing with regards to when the city needed funds, I have that piece to go to, which is going to be much more stable.
Then, I'm sorry, I don't, go ahead. One more quick question on the, on the central treasury fund. You currently have a million plus in there, or we have a million plus in there. Um, we used to have, is it correct that we used to have more with?
Correct.
Invested with you or you held?
Mm-hmm.
And when did that change occur? Um, looking at, I didn't take about it. Looked through your chart. I'd have to that out myself, but it looks like that was a real change in about, between 15 and 16?
Yes, and, and we didn't, uh, obviously, when the distribution's made, we send you the money. We transfer the money to the bank. We don't know what it's being spent for. Um, it might be going into cash in another institution and maybe being spent. All we know is we got to make the distribution. So we started central treasury for us was about 5 million and now it's down to 1. And what other assets the city holds and where they hold them is something that we're, you know, we're not privy to, it's not our business. So we've got a million in central treasury, uh, and that's what we have to work with. We used to draw from that quite a bit. Um, but we haven't had any inflows in years.
Thank you. Okay. Just a second, please, Councilman Allison?
Yeah, I, I think most of that was the school bonds that made it, when we sold all the school bonds, we put them all in there, drew from them as we needed them. So that's why it got up to 20-some million at one point in time.
Right. It was a $15 million issue, I think, that we started with. And we still managed to, in a short time, that money before it was used, still managed to make $300,000 in, in, in interest income on it.
So that's because you weren't, you knew you needed it liquid to draw down for the construction?
Well, when we sold the bonds, we didn't need to spend it all today.
Yeah.
As the construction project went on, we had to draw down those bonds. So we invested them in, in the meantime.
Okay. Um, I'm sorry, which councilman was online, was asking a question?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I think, uh, I, I, the trial, I was going to, he answered it. It was just a, a place to, to hold money until we expended it.
So I'm just kind of curious, um, is there, do you have any communication from, um, you know, the city of Cordova over the course of the relationship that kind of signals when things, money might be needed or when that happened? Or is it, it just kind of comes as a surprise and you just kind of?
No, in the past, I would say some years ago, that, that we would get unexpected surprises. Um, and not expecting to have to make any distributions for six to eight months or something, and then we'd have a request a week or two later. There's a lot going on between the Cordova Center and Snobageddon and all the other things that, that happened. Uh, but, uh, Mr. Stavick's been really good about giving us, really good about giving us a heads up. Guys, we're going to need this money and it's been a smoother ride for us.
Yes, well, that also lets you, if you could kind of anticipate out a little bit, you, you feel a little more comfortable waiting more on a higher risk return or portion of the portfolio?
Or if we see risk in the marketplace, we may pull back the horns until such time as we need it because we don't want you to ask for 600,000 and we give you 500.
Okay. Uh, we're getting pretty close here, counsel. Any other questions for your portfolio managers? Key hearing done, we will, um, conclude this session.
Thank you. Thank you so much. We'd love the relationships. One of our favorites.
Well, we appreciate you coming down upon request and, and, uh, as you mentioned, at no expense to the city as part of your services, so thank you very much. So thank you very much. We're a few minutes since we started, just a few minutes late. Roll call, please.
Mayor Copeland.
Here.
James Burton.
Here.
Ken Jones.
Here.
Jeff Gard.
Here.
Robert Beadle.
Here.
Ann Schaefer.
Here.
David Allison.
Here.
James Wees.
Here.
That's everyone.
Okay, tonight's public hearing agenda item is ordinance 1162 and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cordova, Alaska, repealing and reenacting Cordova Municipal Code Chapter 8.40 Marijuana Regulation, removing the expired temporary prohibition against marijuana establishments within the city of Cordova, adopting regulations for such establishments, repealing and reenacting Cordova Municipal Code Chapter 18.60 Conditional Use Permits to Include Commercial Marijuana Facilities as a Conditional Use Within the City, and clarifying the Conditional Use Process applicable to such facilities. So we have a lot of people from the public here tonight. It would be good if we could, if there are people who want to speak in favor or against this ordinance, if we could try to maybe stagger them so we get some balanced testimony. But the other thing is I just want to clarify that this is strictly about the city ordinance governing marijuana that allows the city to tax, regulate, and deal with marijuana. This has nothing to do with the petition circulating about. So, right.
You want to let them line up here?
Yeah, and that helps actually too, if a lot of people plan on testifying. If you just want to line up on the left side here, then the next person's ready to testify. And then if you could just approach the microphone and as always, give your name and residence address for the record. And for the three councilmen, I believe we have online, we still have Councilman Schaefer, Beadle, oh, we picked up Councilman Gard.
Yes.
Okay, so we have all four councilmen online. Yes, please. Go ahead, Gary.
Good evening. You hear me all right? I'm going to read this just for brevity's sake and make sure I get everything that I have to say here. My name is Gary Graham. I'm a local business owner and 39-year Cordova resident. I have concerns about several items on this evening's agenda, but I will first cover the issue of proposed ordinance 1162. I have mixed feelings about the legalization of marijuana, some neutral and many negative. My main concern, however, is the fact that marijuana is still illegal according to federal statutes. This means that although local and state law enforcement agencies are barred from enforcing marijuana possession and use laws and sale without a license permit, federal law enforcement entities, which include U.S. Coast Guard, U.S. Forest Service Law Enforcement, Transportation Security Administration, FAA, and any other federal agency that might happen to be in Cordova, are still bound to enforce laws prohibiting possession and sale of the drug. This also means that it cannot be possessed or shipped onboard any state ferries or any aircraft. Also, banks cannot have anything to do with a business that deals with illegal drugs. That said, I will refer to a memo from Holly C. Wells, page 47 of tonight's agenda dated December 13th, 2017. In this memo, section 1, paragraph 2, she warns that the city council, and this is a quote, "The city council must remember that the use, sale, manufacturing, and cultivation of marijuana and marijuana products remains unlawful under federal law, and thus there is always risk associated with permitting and regulating the commercial marijuana industry rather than simply prohibiting it," unquote. She goes on to recommend that the city revisit its regulations to ensure they are closely tailored to serve the city's interests. A document commonly referred to as the COLE memo is then referenced and points out that this memo is the basis for states legalizing marijuana sale and use. I will point out that the COLE memo was officially rescinded by a memo issued by Attorney General Jeff Sessions on January 4th, 2018. That was just 22 days after Ms. Wells' memo was written. The very same day the Sessions' memo was released, Marijuana Control Board Chair Peter Malarnik, who is also the police chief of Sodatna, Alaska, resigned his position on the board. He stated, quote, "Nobody really knows what's going to happen," unquote. He also stated in an interview with Channel 2 News on Friday, January 5th, 2018, and I quote again, "I didn't really feel like there was much legal footing, especially as commercial marijuana is concerned. So that concerned me and it seemed like a good time to leave." Ms. Wells also points out that the commercial marijuana industry is a high-risk industry and its participants are generally aware of such risks. The memo from Ms. Wells, coupled with these latest developments, are very disturbing. If this ordinance is adopted, it would make the city of Cordova an accessory to violation of federal law. I therefore ask the city council vote down or at least table the adoption of ordinance number 1162 until Congress acts on this matter and the city of Cordova is no longer at risk of federal charges and/or prosecution and fines. There was another point I wanted to make about the 10th Amendment, and the 10th Amendment states that everything not reserved by the federal government is given to the states. Because there was a question on states' rights that was presented to me, and clearly the federal government is keeping, keeping the regulation of the marijuana. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Penelope Oswald. Do we need to state our address at this point in time or is it just a public? I'm at 240 E Act Drive, Cordova, Alaska. I'd like to say that I support the approval of the city ordinance 1162 regarding the right for marijuana growth in establishments to sell in Cordova. I supported and voted for the marijuana initiative, and it was passed by the citizens of Alaska and by the city of Cordova, 2 to 1 margin, in November 2014. I have read some of the letters in the packet submitted against this issue. Of course, their concerns have some validity. However, at this time, it is legal for adults over the age of 21 to purchase and buy marijuana. Why shouldn't Cordovans have the right to commercially grow and/or purchase without having to travel to Anchorage? I support growing it in Cordova as long as those applying for a license to grow and potentially dispense meet the state guidelines it needs to be allowed. This, I believe, has already been thoroughly debated in our council chambers. Addiction is everywhere: alcohol, opiates, marijuana, sugar, food, work. As long as the rules are followed for usage and laws are not broken, it is up to the individual to monitor themselves. It was voted on and again is now the law. Because marijuana was made totally illegal in 1937 due to misinformation and racism and supposed violent behavior on the part of minorities, the statistics have not been tracked that could prove whether this product is truly bad for you. The statistics cited in the letters submitted show one side of the story. The medical knowledge law suppressed due to the Act of 1937 regarding the health benefits of marijuana are now being published. I believe that it is showing very positive results in many areas. Marijuana is now being used for health and mental health concerns and recreationally to reduce stress and help with insomnia. I take medical marijuana in a pill form for my diabetes and cholesterol. My test scores have lowered and I've been encouraged by my doctor to keep doing whatever it is because it seems to be working. Even my cardiologist has confirmed that it might have a place in my medical care. Yes, people do get high from this plant, but truly after years of bartending, and yes, people may overuse it. I feel marijuana is much better for you than alcohol. The impairment from overinvading is immensely and visibly smaller. In my entire life, I've never seen a person incoherent from smoking marijuana. I might add, yeah. There are a lot of statistics out there and the jury is still out. I believe that the good will far outweigh the bad. I appreciate the concerns regarding Lieutenant Attorney General Sessions' repeal of the COLE Act, but I think that the will of the people are going forward in the United States to say that this is a perfectly legitimate herb and product and should be allowed. And I think that they will not step back from that, back to the 1950s or the 1930s. I would urge you again to vote yes on ordinance 1162.
Thank you.
In 2016, my younger sister died from a heroin overdose. My sister started smoking marijuana in high school and quickly moved on to harder, other harder drugs. One of my most vivid memories of her from high school was getting extremely violent one time when her marijuana seeds were stolen. Marijuana can amplify a problem that is already there. If a person is sluggish, marijuana can make him stupid. If he's angry, it can make him violent. If he's slightly irrational, marijuana can make him insane. If he's suspicious, adding marijuana can make him paranoid. Last Friday, a man opened fire into a carload of women. The man accused these women of stealing marijuana from him. Studies have shown that marijuana can often lead to harder drugs, especially at the teenage years. High school students in Portland say they have to smoke more and more marijuana to get the same high. These kids are using water pipes, which are sometimes causing seizures, which some people say marijuana prevents. These kids are also creating marijuana concentrates that cause them to pass out. Combining marijuana with other drugs to get better highs are very common. Marijuana products are not subject to review by the FDA and are considered illegal. Therefore, many claims of marijuana's effectiveness in medical treatment, such as cancer treatment, are fraudulent. Labeling of marijuana, marijuana candies, drinks, and so forth are contributing to a belief that marijuana is harmless. When people are allowed to illegally market agents that deliver no established benefit, they may steer patients away from products that could extend lives, says FDA Commissioner Scott Gottlieb. I hope the city council will take to harder testimonies and make Cordova a safer and healthier environment for our children and our community.
Okay. Can I ask you to just state your name and community residence?
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
Jenny Grimwood, I live here in Cordova.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name's Lorna DeCoke, I live at 1014 Wyshon. I just wanted, I've read some articles in the paper about things with the marijuana dispensary, and there was some concerns I had as far as it was raised about being a small business and being small business friendly to Cordova. I hope they also consider what small businesses, what they're doing for the small businesses that are already here and things that can be done to help that. We moved here five years ago, and I think our opinion would have changed if we would have known that there was a dispensary in Cordova. It's very concerning to me, and I wonder if you're going to be, my question is if you're going to be eliminating residents from coming to Cordova, if it's going to be a family-friendly atmosphere that you're putting forth. It is also, you know, personally for me, I lost a dear friend on December 31st, 2016. He was hit by a 19-year-old who admittedly smoked pot before he got into his vehicle. He was less than two miles from home. I think we need to look at the ramifications that this might have on our community as far as kids go. I find it very concerning when I hear that in the elementary school, 6th grade kids are already experimenting with drugs. I think it's an issue that we need to take seriously. When we moved up here, I knew I heard that there had been a drug problem in Cordova, and I think it's something that hasn't been really thoroughly looked at or things have done about it. But thank you for your time.
Thank you. So just a reminder, we're on a public hearing for ordinance 1162 regarding marijuana regulation.
Mark Patson sent you. I guess that was too against for the last round there, but I did like to speak for states' rights tonight. I think the state of Alaska has spoken, the people of Alaska have spoken. And whether or not the federal government at this point believes it has the right to step in and push the state of Alaska around on something that is making money for the people, I doubt that. I doubt that that will hold up to the American people for any length of time, and it's obviously not in effect anywhere else, so. The other thing I wanted to say at this point was to compare cannabis with alcohol, tobacco, heroin, methamphetamines is just totally ridiculous. The research is in, it's been in for a long time. Says many valuable medical purposes, particularly for older people. I was going to move into a community, I would look for a community that had a dispensary because every dollar that's spent in that dispensary is not going to go to the liquor store or the cigarette machine or the guy selling heroin down the street. That's where that loose dollar is going to go. And, you know, that's just got to be better for everybody all the way around, less car crashes and less fights. The science is in on it. To go back to the 1930s and try to sell that again is, you know, it's a waste. And, yeah, I just came to speak for the states' rights, but I don't believe the federal government has any place stepping on us here.
Okay, thank you. Further testimony on ordinance 1162?
Tom Carpenter, 501 Sunnyside Drive. I've spoke to the council before regarding the language in this ordinance. I think there's a couple of things that are interesting to me, either for or against it, but this comes down to a taxation situation, in my opinion. The first reading that you brought before us had language in there where there was going to be a tax associated with the growing and the sale of marijuana in Cordova. And to my knowledge, that's been taken out. I read the language that the city attorney wrote, that this could go forward on a second reading, and that she didn't consider that a significant change to the first reading. I tend to disagree with that. I think that that's a pretty significant change, and I think that there ought to be some more debate by the council in regards to the taxation that's generated. You know, as you all know, we have other things that we're trying to generate taxes from, so if this isn't one of them, I'm not sure, sure what we're going to do. Secondly, and I'm not really sure if I'm going to be right or wrong in my next statement, but I'm pretty sure that monies associated with the sale and generation of marijuana are not allowed to be, you're not allowed to utilize the current banking system. So my question is, is that is the city allowed to take in sales tax revenue that's generated from a business that garnishes sales taxes from that thing? Are they allowed to utilize the banking system with the money that comes from the proceeds? And I think that that would be something interesting to ask the city attorney before you go any further, because I don't want the city to be put into a bad situation in regards to, as Mr. Graham said, dealing with the federal authorities on something like this. So there's a lot of underlying circumstances outside the pros and cons of do you like or do you not like marijuana? So I hope that the city council, when they bring this up this evening, will consider some of those possible consequences. Thank you.
Thank you. Further testimony on public hearing regarding ordinance 1162?
My name's Rusty Higgins, 462nd Street. I hate speaking in front of people, so forgive me here. Back when I was in early junior high, I knew this was wrong. Kids in the back of the bus had stuff in a plastic bag and I already knew it was wrong. Most of us here agree that two wrongs don't make a right, but apparently thousands and thousands of wrongs to some people seem to all of a sudden make it right. I lost my daughter a few years ago, and that's why I'm here speaking today. Just because it was made into law doesn't mean that it's right. People here are jumping all over and going to take full advantage of this in every way possible. If this is in some way about money, well, we need to shut this thought down right now. It's completely ridiculous. I mean, you're weighing business with right and wrong, in my opinion. It's just completely the most ridiculous thing I've ever heard. I keep thinking of a travel brochure that somebody might pick up that doesn't live here to talks about all the great wonderful things that Cordova has to offer. And, no. It's just gonna, I mean, we want to be proud of everything we put in something like that. Is everybody here seriously going to be proud of the fact that a family can come to Cordova and fill out all the proper paperwork to satisfy the city council and say, sure, you can open up a drug lab and you can do it within city limits? It makes it easy walking distance to the school, to the grocery store, it makes it easy on everybody. Sure, come join our lovely family community. These are, I have some more thoughts that I wrote down here. Raising children here is hard enough. I failed once already. I now have another daughter of my daughter. We need to do everything we can to protect our children here. They're so precious. When we did the ice war near a few days back, it was a beautiful thing. It was a beautiful day. I was driving the vehicle pulling a flood. I looked down Main Street, alls I saw was children. And it was just an amazing thing. And alls I could think about was that the city council, seriously, I saw this in the newspaper, I just about was upset, my heart racing for two damn days when I read it. Now it is legal in Cordova for a person to start a marijuana business and sell it. I about, it's a good thing I have a strong heart. I wouldn't be here today. I never felt so strongly about an issue that caused me to stand up and speak in front of people. That fact alone makes me angry and pisses me off. I mean, is the city council seriously, if this continues, going to seriously issue a permit that somebody qualifies for and fills out all the technical paperwork? Going to be issued a permit to sell a drug that we've all known since we were born is wrong? We've been taught it was wrong, we know it's wrong, all the people, most of the people that are associated with this when we were young, it's wrong. I'm not debating that it has medical benefits. I agree with a lot of that for medical reasons. And that to means a person with a medical marijuana card, most of them have been doing it for so long, they don't know what else to do, and a doctor will issue a medical marijuana permit to everybody. It's just completely ridiculous. I mean, so we've got, we've got enough drug dealers and rapists and child molesters here in Cordova, do we really need to add to the pile? As far as the tax issue that's supposed to be on the table, I'm supposed to be talking about, I'm not hearing taxes, I'm hearing drugs, period. I pick up my granddaughter at school and various things around town, dancing and I pick up my granddaughter at school and various things around town, dancing and wrestling and stuff. I see a parent come in to pick up their child and they smell and reek of this stuff. It makes me uncomfortable, makes everybody around me uncomfortable. Everybody, I'm worried somebody's gonna look and think that it's me. I see this as human weakness on a massive scale. It's just not right. Because it's the law, it doesn't make it right. There's right and wrong, and this is wrong. Let's keep Cordoba safe for our children. That's why we live here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Startup place in 601 Cedar Street. I just wanted to speak against the ordinance and as well as the sale of marijuana in Cordoba. I know that the state of Alaska voted on it. They voted to let municipalities decide this for ourselves. And I for one don't want it here. I do not want to see this happen. Reading in your packet, the ADN article, the Anchorage School Districts and the problems that they're already facing, it's relatively new in Anchorage, and they're already facing large problems from it. This is not what we want for our kids. It is not what I want for Cordoba. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
About the petition, can we discuss the petition?
Right now, we're speaking to the ordinance. We can, if there's feedback on the petition, we can do that on items on the agenda. I think we have correspondence regarding that, don't we? So I'll take some, when we start the regular meeting, towards the beginning of that meeting, we can take comments on the marijuana petition. Is there other comments at this time on the city ordinance regarding marijuana?
Melina Meyer, 1 Kerry Row. I wasn't really planning on speaking tonight. I've spoke to you guys a lot about it with issues. Now that this is the third time that this ordinance has come up and it's now the second reading. I think that passing this would give good language for the city. It doesn't affect the petition that's going on around town. And having a foundation of how to regulate something that is state legalized is a benefit to the community and the community to be able to regulate it. Really feel for these issues that other people are bringing up. I think there's a lot of misinformation out there that causes that perception. Me personally, I don't, I'm not gonna go through each one saying what's wrong and what's right, because I think people have their own opinion about things. And I personally would never wanna do anything that would hurt this community or hurt children or anybody for that matter. I think every life has purpose and everybody is.
That withdraw your application?
No.
But anyways, I just wanted to thank you guys for doing this and thanks.
Thank you.
Roseanne Curran, 110 Sunmill Avenue. Another nervous speaker here, sorry. There is a mountain of scientific evidence compiled over nearly 30 years to prove that marijuana poses serious risks, particularly for developing brains. Some of the risks for use include issues with attention, memory, and learning, poorer education and life outcomes, reduced IQ for persistent heavy users, potential for addiction to marijuana, THC, and increased risk of addiction to other drugs, increased risk of psychosis and possible suicide. 10% of those who try marijuana become addicts. If marijuana usage starts in adolescence, the chance of addiction increases to one in six. Marijuana use by kids between the age of 12 and 17 is 58% higher in Colorado than the national average. A recent study showed that regions in Colorado where higher youth marijuana use had marijuana commercialization in the form of retail and medical stores. Make no mistake about it, a retail store in our town will increase drug use and addiction. Give us a chance to say no to marijuana marketing and protect Cordoba's most valuable assets, our kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Ezekiel Brown, 601 Spruce Street. I'd just like to speak in support of the ordinance allowing marijuana retail in town. Anybody who wants to buy marijuana can buy it very easily right now. All we're gonna do is be able to knock tax dollars off of the sale and regulate it gets it, so I think it's a good idea. Thank you.
Any additional comments on ordinance 1162? Okay, thank you. I know it can be very uncomfortable speaking publicly for the first time, so appreciate everyone being respectful and weighing in. So seeing no other testimony, we'll adjourn the public hearing. We'll just take about a two-minute recess before we start the regular meeting. February 8, 2016, to order at 7:25. If you could please, please join me in pledging the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the votes.
Mayor Poplin?
Here.
James Burton?
Here.
Ken Jones?
Here.
Jeff Gard?
Here.
Robert Beadle?
Here.
Ann Schaefer?
Here.
David Allison?
Here.
James Weiss?
Here.
And Olivia Carroll?
Here.
That's former of council.
Thank you.
Move to approve the regular agenda? Second.
Motion of second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, the gentle stand is presented. Does any councilman have a conflict of interest to declare? Hearing none. Communications buy-in petition for visitors. Are there any audience comments on any of the items on tonight's agenda? In a same process, if you just wanna approach the microphone and say your name and community residence, and then try to get close to the mic for the councilman online. Thank you.
Gary Graham, once again, 102 Kimick Way. After hearing the testimony tonight, I'd like to request the council consider doing everything they can to get this put on the March 6th ballot, if it's possible. I think it needs to go to the community. I think there were a lot of people in town, probably here during the November election, that don't live here during the winter months. And I think we'll get a better test on this, on a vote in March, to tell if the people really want this or not. That's all I'm gonna say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Dean Curran. I live at 110 Sunmill Avenue. And I want to go on record as being against a marijuana store and growing of it in our town. Because you didn't let us vote on this issue, we started a petition to bring this issue to a public vote. We collected 251 signatures in five days. Of this, I collected 130 myself. With this in mind, I'm asking you council members not to move forward on ordinance 1162 till this petition has been brought to a citywide vote. Let the people of Cordoba vote on whether we want a marijuana store and grow a grow site in our town. Have you council members considered the ramifications of having a marijuana store in town? Crime will likely go up, the police and the hospital will be dealing with more drug-related incidents, and adolescent use will go up as well as addiction. Who is going to pay for this additional cost to the city? In our city, it seems like most of the police calls now are related to alcohol. So why don't we raise the taxes on alcohol and also tobacco products? We're looking for ways to raise taxes. Tax the area that is causing the problem. I studied from Colorado and Rhode Island. They are finding they aren't collecting enough taxes from a marijuana industry to pay for the damages that it causes. In conclusion, the marijuana industry is not a good industry for this town or for its kids. Let us vote on this issue before we go any further. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
Tom Carpenter, 501 Sunnyside Drive. I'd like to speak to all three resolutions or ordinances or ordinance 1162. I think it's appropriate at this time that the city council table this. I think that it's very important for a subject as dividing as it seems to be in a community like as small as Cordoba, that it's very appropriate that there be an advisory vote allowed. I think the petition that was generated shows that there's pretty significant opposition to it. I think some of the language in the current resolution regarding taxes and things of that nature need to be looked at a little bit closer. So I would hope that the city council would entertain that as an option. Ordinance 1163 and 1164, I've spoke to these before. I'm against these personally. And in regards to ordinance 1164, my employer, Copper River Seafoods, is adamantly opposed to this motor fuel tax. It will increase our expenses dramatically. It will possibly even force some of the fuel purchases that would normally take place in Cordoba to be done elsewhere, where this tax is not quite as steep. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Mary Gonzalez, and I live at 42 Adams Avenue. I address you city council members tonight as our representatives, and I hope that I'm not stretching the truth in doing so. Just as you listened last month to those who want to legalize marijuana in our town, I ask the same due respect and consideration at this second reading. About the January 3 meeting, Cordoba Times said, "A few council members changed their minds as the vote approached." That's a quote. "After listening to two citizens, tonight we represent 251 voters. Do they not deserve to be heard?" We would probably all agree that a democratic government is the best form available, and we cherish the phrase "of the people, by the people, and for the people." So I ask you, please listen to both sides of this issue. Your vote must reflect our voice as well. I've not served on a city council, but I did live in Mexico for almost 30 years, where much of my job was to translate between Spanish and English. Sometimes things with which I did not agree, but my job was to be a tool for communication, putting my own opinion aside, to exclusively convey what had just been said. So I understand how restrictive that can feel, being a representative. But I ask you council members to do the same, just represent the people. This is a small town, and even though we have different opinions, we are friends and neighbors and coworkers. We see each other at the store, at the post office, at the church, at the harbor, at the ballgames, and even on the plane or ferry. Even though we have deep personal convictions about marijuana use, maybe due to family struggles that have ended in devastating heartache, we still wanna live in peace and friendship in our community. So give us a chance to express those convictions in the privacy of a voting booth, in secrecy, where we can be true to ourselves without offending anyone else. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kantu Ho. I live in 129 Harbor Loop Road. I am here for the item number 25 on agenda. I accept, I hope you accept our application and approve for our deal of trust, so we can build a new procedure, foster our local fishermen, and create more jobs for the community. Also, I would like to thank you very much, the city and all the fishermen, for help and support in the past. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Greg Rubio, grew up here, the Beltway should. I wanna speak on ordinance 1162, no, 1163 and 1164. I just wanna share a couple of things I've seen, and not trying to call anybody out or anything like this, but the way a lot of city governments work is at the end of every fiscal year, they look at their budget and they go, oh shoot, we have $30,000 left or $20,000 left. And they say, we gotta spend this all before the year's over, otherwise we won't get approved for the same amount of money the following year. So they go on a spending spree and they buy a bunch of stuff that they were probably doing fine without. Some of it they needed, sure. All in the effort of getting approved for the same amount of money the following year, so that they're never short on budget. I think the idea of raising low rates, raising the cap on the sales tax and selling fuel excise tax, I, quite frankly, I think it's asinine. I think we need to figure out a way to incentivize less spending on the city department's part instead of making it harder on small businesses and individuals that have to live here all year round. And that's pretty much all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Leo Vargas, 1901 Copper River Highway. I'm here to speak about ordinance 1163 and 64. I'm representing Tryon Seafood's. I just wanna echo basically what Tom is saying, you know, it's gonna bring the cost of operation a lot higher for us. It's gonna make us look a lot closer to our big fuel purchases in town. And we're gonna be, you know, thinking about running tenders to other locations where it's more affordable. So something that you guys have to keep in mind, you know. I know we didn't speak out before, but Tryon is not in favor of these ordinance. I also wanted, as a private citizen, I wanna make a comment on 1162. I'm a parent of young children, and I oppose the having a store in town. Anyway, thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. Jim Cash, 824 Woodland Drive. Thank everyone for doing what you do on council. I know exactly how hard it is and how difficult the decisions you have to make are, and I'd like to speak tonight on 1163 and 1164. But I'll start by saying, when you were elected, you were elected by the community, by the people here, and to represent them, to be their voice. And after a certain amount of time of sitting around these chairs, you wind up representing the city instead of the community. And so when you take into consideration decisions about taxes, increasing taxes, increasing the burden on the, basically 48% of the community that pays, about 52%, as we all know, is exempt. Anytime you raise taxes, you raise taxes on a limited amount of people. So ask yourself, before you raise these taxes, is the money needed? Can we do without? Can we change the way we do city business? Are there things we can do without? Are there buildings we can do without? Is there programming we can do without? Maintaining a level of government that we cannot afford, just because it's been that way, isn't always the best idea. So, as you consider these taxes, keep in mind the community that put you there. Thank you very much.
Tom Baylor, 304 O for Amelant Drive. I'd like to speak on all three of your ordinances. On 1162, you had a great opportunity to get public input. Just let it go to the vote. This notion, because it passed 2 to 1 on the state level, that would, that would tell you that they want it here, I don't think that holds true. Some people may, may have agreed with having it legalized, but that doesn't mean they want it here in this town as a store. I signed a petition for ordinance 1163 and 1164, and I took no pleasure in that, having sat in your seat and sat in, and playing zone seats for a number of years, I know you put a lot of work into it, but I signed it because I really didn't feel that it was necessary. I sponsored it originally when it went from $2,500 to $3,000. I felt that was appropriate. We had a pretty good discussion, reached out to the people that it affected, everybody agreed on it. I know you had members, myself as a builder, you had members from Wilson Construction, contracting, you had Cordova Outboard, you had all these folks here that just kind of targeted this cap. You had no questions asked. I mean, you focused in on maybe the house package, well, that's a very, well, small part of this, as far as the construction industry goes. There's a lot of jobs up there that are $3,000, $5,000, $7,000, $10,000 if this affects. And it seems to kind of target it, the construction industry. You know, I, over the years, I've accounted for $4.5 to $5 million worth of infrastructure in this community. You're getting taxes out of all of that, and it continues to go up in price. So the little bit that we get on, on the, on the building side of it, the start side of it, you regroup and it encourages people to get building permits. This is a disincentive when you go up to this much money. So, I wish it reached out to the businesses that this affected. And then, combination of the $7,500 and then the four cents a gallon, that really compounds it. So, I think you need to, I hate to say this, but I think you need to tear it all down and start all over. Balance the budget with what you've got in reserves and open up to this, this discussion with the people at this effects and see how we could work this out. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Bannon, 811 Woodland Drive. I'd like to talk about the fuel tax and the tax cap. These ordinance, ordinances put together will raise our fuel 11 cents a gallon at Wilson Construction. We purchased 2,400 gallons at a time, so that equals out to be $264 increase per load of fuel. These costs will have to be passed to our customers. Also, with the tax cap being raised, some people will, will think about not doing projects with us that they might have done before, just because of that tax cap, it's going to raise their, raise it out of their bounds to do, do the work. Almost all our invoices are large, just because of the work that we do. So, it will affect almost all invoices except for, you know, small stuff, but most of our invoices are large. I feel that this tax cap ordinance unfairly targets our company and companies that sell large invoice items. That's it for the tax cap and the fuel tax. But I'm also against a marijuana establishment in the city. There's, there's petition circulated, as you know, 250 signatures, 251 in five days. I think that the second reading of this ordinance should be tabled until a vote is made by the people of the city on this issue, and then we can move forward after that. Also, the final item is the sale of the property. I'm, I'm also P and Z commissioner, so, just so you know that. But I'd like to see this property that's on the Northville be sold to Rob Brown. I think it's a, would be a good use of the law, and, and it benefits the fishermen and the community. Also, I think it would be better use of the lot than just for storage of boats. And, you know, basically the city's in direct competition with private enterprise, like, buy the storage of these boats around that lot. Therefore, you know, I just think it'd be better usage of the, of the lot to be sold to Rob Brown. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Lot of items on the agenda. Any further public comment on items on the agenda tonight?
Mark Crafton, 107, you're listening to everybody talk tonight and the commentary, and I would also support a city vote. I think that would simplify the issue a lot and might avoid a lot of animosity in the community.
Thank you. Any further public testimony?
Good evening, Mark Frontefold, 813 Woodland Drive now. I'm here to talk on 1163 and 1164. You guys have all heard me before, every single one of you, even in one way or another about these, these two ordinances. And the biggest concern is that it, that it hurts businesses. Tonight, you've heard from Copper River Seafoods, you've heard from Tryon, those are our, two of our bigger employers that are here year-round. We have Ocean Beauty. We feel strongly enough about this that, that we met with each one of these processors in Seattle last week, to, to find out how this is going to affect their business and what we can do. And I think you heard a little bit of it tonight, that, that it is going to change the way they, they do business in Cordoba based upon how they have to manage their business. With that said, it takes, it's not just the, the fuel surcharge or the, the sales tax that we lose when these big boats don't fuel here. It's the sales tax revenue that AC loses, that Red Net loses, that LFS loses, the reluctant fishermen for crew changes, all those things have a, have a negative effect on businesses in Cordoba. And, and we need to really, really work hard to make Cordoba a place that we want to do business, not that we have to do business. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Ron Blake, 106 West David. I guess on the marijuana ordinance, I don't see a downside to putting it to a vote. The taxes, I'm not, I'm not in support of either one of those. And then the, the fill lots, I have a, a hard time believing that the city wouldn't benefit more from Rob Brown's building than it does from storing some boats. I understand it might create some conflict with the hardware department and stuff, but I believe that could be worked out. As far as Cam Tu's building there, I know that, you know, she's been great for the town and, you know, she's trying to expand her fishing operation. We're a fish in town. Any support that we can give to industry, I think that's crucial to our economy. Thank you.
Thank you. Further audience comments on agenda items?
Don Scott, 204 Board Walkway, manager in North Star Lumber. We've been here several times talking about the sales tax cap. And what the contractors, a lot of them have spoke to me about is why you get a building permit now? Most of the stuff falls below the $7,500. Why should they spend the money to get a building permit now? You're kind of defeating yourself by leaving this cap at $7,500. Now, you're not going to have any idea what's going on in your own town. I'm totally against raising it to $7,500. I would really like you guys to bring it back to $3,000. And like I've said before, come talk to us, we will talk to you. You are all fishermen, most of you are. You don't rely on me to come to your store to make a living. I rely on everybody in this town to come to my store. You can sell your fish in Whittier, you can sell your fish in Baldi's, you can sell your fish in Seward, you can go anywhere and sell your fish. I rely on every person in this town for my living. Totally against the cap, please lower it back. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments on agenda items?
Jacob Peterson, 828 Woodland Drive. I just want to say that the tax, sales tax and the cap and fuel, raising fuel tax is making businesses in Cordoba a lot less competitive. And like you heard from lots of other businesses here, they, they're making people consider other options besides getting things done in town or buying things in town. So, I just wanted to voice that I was against. Thank you.
Thank you. Further audience comments on agenda items?
Nick Rogers, Orchestricle Drive. We moved to town last, last fall and became very quickly acquainted with the taxation ways of Cordoba. And I attended the meeting when it was brought up before, and shortly after that, came into some issues in regards to city business and fundamentally realized that the city was doing business and wanted to do business in very expensive ways, which is fine, except for when you have to raise taxes to do it. And then I considered, and am still considering, doing business in this community, and opening business in this community. But it does concern me, as I listen to the language of the city, that they, it seemed to be a predatory issue, where they, they wanted to, to get the revenue from the businesses and didn't want to look for smarter ways to do business as the city. And so, that to me just raises kind of red flags, projecting out into the future of, you know, how much do you want to invest in a community when you never know when the next shoe is going to drop on you as far as the city deciding, oh, hey, this happened, so now we just need to change the tax code. So, those are all just concerns of mine. Thank you.
Ezekiel Brown, 601 Spruce Street. I'd like to speak in favor of allowing marijuana retail, and, and I would like to speak towards the $7,500 for the, the raised sales tax cap. As commercial fishermen, buy a lot of things that are above the current cap that would, that fall under, and I can air freight, you know, for $7,500, I can pay to air freight by part from how to, apparently easily, and avoid paying sales tax. And that's what a lot of people end up doing because of that. I'd like to speak in favor of allowing Cam Tu to expand her processing down there on the Southville, and for Rob Brown to get the Northville lot. He wants to spend a lot of money building a shop in this town, and I think he wants to build it where he wants to build it, just not, somewhere he doesn't want to be. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other audience comments on agenda items? Okay, seeing none. Reports, leave. CCMC?
Well, hang on, hang on. Where are we?
Chairpersons and representatives of boards and commissions.
Sorry.
Good evening. Got a long agenda, so I'll keep my report short tonight. CCMC, as you know, had to evacuate our facility as a result of the tsunami warning on the 23rd last month. That's the first time that the facility has actually been completely evacuated since the late 80s. They've had a couple of drills since then, but we were able to evacuate safely 18 patients and residents in less than an hour, once the, the order was given. And we were able to do that because we had 29 of our staff members that came in after being called in after the earthquake and the warning. We also had 13 volunteers from the community that stopped to help us. So in less than an hour, we moved 18 patients and residents, seven truckloads of supplies and equipment, all of them in personal vehicles. And we also took enough food to feed 100 people for three days to our evacuation site. All of that within less than an hour. So we did a, a really good job, no injuries, no change in the status of any of the patients or residents. So, the process went extremely smooth. So, I think Cordova should be proud to have a healthcare facility with a group of professionals that can do something like that, that quick. Thank you, really means a lot to the staff to, to have the support of the community. CCMC has been doing a lot of work to try to right the ship, so to speak. Over the last year or so, we've made a lot of improvements, we've increased the amount of revenue coming in, we've actually reduced our expenses, we've reduced the amount of capital investment from the city considerably, and we're continuing to do that. So we've got a lot of, a lot of different projects underway. We've had a census that has been increasing over the last year or so, and we continue to do our part to help Cordoba continue its, its improvement and work with the city council as we move forward over the next couple of years, to make the, the organization a much better place for, for the, the people in Cordoba. So, thank you.
Thank you. Scott, the, I guess we have a lot of audience here, how much did the city council cut your operating budget this year?
The, I think it was in 2016, I think CCMC received $1.2 million from the city. Last year, the, we actually, for the first time, worked with the city to prepare a budget of estimated costs, and that was roughly half of the $1.2 million. So there was a little bit more because of a couple of projects. bit more because of a couple of projects. The pharmacy project, for example, that money will be paid back over the years as part of that. This year, we're at about the same amount this year, a little over 600,000.
And your financials now, as of this date compared to this time last year?
We're about a million dollars better on the bottom line than what we were a year ago.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions, council?
Thank you.
Thank you. School board? I did get a report. We're well into the evening and not so far into the agenda, but I just want to thank Tom Baylor, the council's representative on the Prince William Sound Aquaculture Board, and he submitted a written report here. Just an update. I'll just kind of, real briefly, there's a new CEO there, Casey Campbell. He's been back and forth to the hatcheries. He's been out visiting the hatcheries. Some new hatchery staff have been brought on board and they have a new executive assistant. So this will go into the record for the next packet, so the public can see it and council gets a chance to read it. And now we have our student council representative report. Olivia?
Okay, so unless you were living under a rock last weekend, congratulate Miss Ice Room, Samantha Vargas, first runner-up Amanda Taitano, second runner-up Bria Smike, and the rest of the Ice Room candidates. Also, Jim Casement. He does so much for our school. The senior photos over the years, Case, music while he's creating, opening the weight room for students in the morning, just everything he does. Jim Casement was an amazing choice for Citizen of the Year and from the school's point of view embodies the type of person we needed in Cordova. We'd like to send our congratulations to him. And even though he was not here tonight and he isn't at the variety show, the school appreciates him and the hard work he does for our school. The junior high wrestling team is traveling this weekend. Closeup is selling crab dinner tickets for President State Dinner. Contact a closeup student for purchase. By the way, I'm a closeup student, and the dinner will be great. William Deaton won president and August Jewell vice president. If you see them, congratulate them and wish them luck. Filling the former, the shoes of our former Samantha Vargas and Josie Moffett will not be easy, but student council and I have complete faith in their abilities. Aliyah Malazo and I will be traveling to Juneau on Friday until Wednesday as representative from student council for our school. We will lobby with our school district leaders for more money for education purposes and to learn about our government. Make sure you come to the homecoming games next weekend. Spirit Committee will not let you down. The cheerleaders have a cute dance planned with the little kids. The basketball games will be great. It will honestly just be a good traditional Cordova time. The school will bring our community closer together with an energetic and fun-filled event. So come support your basketball teams, seniors for their senior night, and all the other Wolverines there working to make homecoming, an event that can bring our community together through the spirit of our school.
Okay, thank you. Approval of the consent calendar? Two items?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent calendar.
It's, it's, I can just call the roll?
Roll call. Just a roll call vote.
David Allison?
Yes.
Robert Beadle?
Yes.
Ken Jones?
Yes.
Jeff Gard?
Yes.
James Wees?
Yes.
James Burton?
Yes.
Ann Schaefer?
Yes.
The consent calendar is approved.
Approval of the minutes of the January 3, 2018 regular council meeting?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the minutes of 13-18 council regular meeting.
Second. Any changes, additions, or deletions to the minutes submitted?
Mr. Mayor, I did have one change. I did not see myself on the roll call. I was late. I did not see where I was recorded as present, three minutes late.
Did I not write it later?
I recall that.
I didn't remember seeing it in there. So.
It's under section D that you write at 7:06.
Yeah, I thought I wrote it later.
Okay. Is that suffice?
Do you see it there? Okay.
Okay. Any other additions, deletions, or corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Host?
Aye.
Okay, that was in favor. We crossed in the ether there. Okay, we don't have any bids for consideration. Reports of officers. I'll try to keep this real brief. Council and manager and stakeholders have been working on our draft harbor expansion plan. We're going to try to get some public feedback, but I was able to meet in Juneau with the governor and various legislators. And it's mostly been formulated on the 2013 feedback from the community. Probably be good to get some more community feedback, but we're looking at a combination of city, private, state, and federal infrastructure to expand our harbor and uplands and, and mortgage, which we're desperately short on. See, I mentioned I was in Juneau last week and able to meet with the governor, representative and Senator Stevens, and I'll be including an update on that report, I think, at this point. We'll just circulate the summary to council and put it in the next packet. I've been working with the Forest Service on Point North's efforts to get some Forest Service land nearby the community so that they can have some additional fly space to accommodate their 10% to 15% over bookings that they currently can't accommodate because they just need more room. I sent a letter to the governor, legislators, and Department of Fish and Game thanking them for the small tanner crab fishery. It's a big step in the right direction for what the council's really been working on with their three-year strategic plan to try to grow and broaden our tax base so that we don't have to consider tax increases. I attended, just on personal time, the IFQ committee meeting this Monday in Seattle, again, to try to present the city and our fishing communities, the importance of those fisheries, basically paying fair wages to our boats and fleets and, and crews. The IFQ program was set up with the express purpose of having operators onboard the vessels. So, and then I'll be traveling to Washington DC at the end of the month to carry the city's infrastructure requests, also to meet with the Coast Guard Command regarding their selection site for the Coast Guard cutters, the two fast class cutters. Elections are coming soon. The applications closed last night at 5 o'clock. It's not too late for write-ins, but I encourage citizens to consider city council and any vacancies on boards and commissions. We didn't have a school board report tonight. I just wanted to mention, again, the school board budget has been cut along with the hospitals. I just kind of wanted the audience to hear that because council's put a lot of effort over last year into developing a three-year strategic plan. Nobody likes taxes, but these taxes were implemented specifically to try to target the summer industry. Pretty much the only industry that we had is fishing so that they didn't have to make substantial increases either to the sales tax, and believe me, we heard from those businesses about this time last year when council was looking at that, or to implement substantial increases in property tax. And the intention is to put these taxes in place and keep them in place for the next three years so the business community does have some surety about where the plan's going, and also to give the, the city a little bit of working capital to try to focus on what they really want to be focused on this year and next year, which is expanding our tax base and pursuing the opportunities we have. So I just wanted to mention that. And I, and I have talked to a lot of citizens that have, are spending and shopping in our stores, including large purchases, because the $180 difference in tax is not worth it for them to shop outside of Cordova. And I think it just underscores the importance that we are all in this together. And to the extent that we do shop and support our businesses in this community, that's how we fund city and hospital and, and school services. We have a lot of backtalk, excuse me, online. There's a lot of bad feedback there. If you can mute your phone until you're ready to talk. Thank you. Any questions on my report? I abbreviated pretty sharply and again, I was traveling, so I didn't get my written report in the packet. I'll submit them so that you have a chance to see them in the next packet. Okay, city clerk's, sorry, manager's report.
If you recall, we had a town hall meeting on the 30th, which explained our response in detail on the earthquake tsunami warning. And we had all of our personnel there to walk you through that and then answer questions. Only 24 people there, but, and most of them were connected with the response. So I don't know if that's available online to watch or not, but I think that was pretty informative. To that end, and admitting my own weaknesses in the incident command system, I will be attending training on the 26th through the 2nd of March, and that's all in-house. It's all here. So I will be here that week, but I'll be grinding away on learning my stuff there. Now, I've completed the four preliminary courses for that. These are the formal ones. As you remember, I will be out the 13th through the 19th, and we received our, we received five proposals back for the used oil project we have. Hang on to your chairs. The little bit was 800,000. So we're, we're trying to recalculate that project, and we will get back to you once we've done that. We should have, I got preliminary final numbers on our budget. We should have five final numbers on the budget here coming up pretty quickly. I can give you where we stand for the year, but again, I think we're going to do very well, even given our reduced budget. And then, you know, we've talked about spending money on doing a couple of things. One is the comprehensive plan, and one is a potential waterfront master plan, which could include a lot of stuff. But to that end, we've talked about doing things in-house, and today we found from 2013, chapter four is the personnel regulations in the handbook. Today, we found a complete redo of that that was done by the attorney and so forth. And so we'll be bringing that to you without spending any additional money. So that's a saving. So that's all I have, and we'll have several items in, you know, connected together in the executive session while I'll have some more conversation. Open any questions?
Any questions, council? Council, I'm just going to throw in one more thing. The one meeting I did want to mention in Juneau was a meeting with Department of Revenue regarding the raw fish taxes. And I can only say it was pretty frustrating and disappointing conversation. And I left there more concerned than I walked in, that it's really going to be hard for us to predict what our raw fish tax revenues are for next year. They literally couldn't seem to tie the size or amount of the catch to what our taxes are. So we're going to follow through there, but that was, I was kind of surprised. And so anyway, I'm concerned about what might happen there next year. City clerk's report?
Mr. Mayor, real quick?
Yeah, Councilman Burton.
Did you get any clarification from the Department of Revenue on the timeline that those taxes are accumulated? Is it the state's fiscal year, is it the calendar year, some combination of the two, or something that's generally different?
No, I, I did, and that, that's what was really kind of frustrating. The, the tax year is the calendar year from January 1st to December 31st. They, the filings are pretty much due by March, and so they don't process them until June, and they don't share them with the municipalities until October. So really, from the previous year, it should be pretty clear what the tax revenues are. But they started saying things like, it depends on how they're coded and maybe they're miscoded, but we guarantee that they're dead accurate. And so trust me, there's going to be some follow-through there. Very concerned about our transparency of how they calculate those, calculate those taxes and, and our ability to predict. And we asked them if they could even give us a three or four week, or give council a three or four week jump on what those revenues, revenues might be as you go into your budget discussions in October. And we explained what happens. We're expecting $400,000 of revenue, and we base, council bases your budget on that and, and implements your plan. And then, you know, you get a million dollars worth of revenue. It can be pretty frustrating. So even though you've baked that in. Yeah. So that's.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Beadle.
Before you move on, I was just curious, the projected cost of the oil building there for the harbor was, you know, closer to 200. Is there a, gosh, that's a, that's a four pole difference. I'm just curious about, how could our projection be so far off, I guess?
I don't, I don't have an answer for that.
Well, what happened was the, you know, the harbor master, the city's engineer and public works director and our facilities manager sat down and went through what kind of building was needed, the size of the building, you know, the floor, the drains. They went through all the stuff that they needed. They wrote up a bid package for that, and that's what they sent out. And those are the, well, it wasn't a bid package, it was proposals. These were all proposals as opposed to formal bids. So we just, we wanted to understand where we were. And all, all five proposals ranged between 800,000 and 1.2 million. So we're going back and looking at that. I, I've asked someone to review that bid package for me to see where we're at, and we'll, we'll figure it out somehow. Because I think our budget is more like 320. We had 200 that was approved by council to be moved from the harbor reserves, and we budgeted 60,000 in 17 that was unspent, and we budgeted another 60,000 for 18, I think, so far that hasn't been spent. So you could combine all of that. And we were hoping that that's where that project would come in, at 320 or so. But.
So just for clarifications, those were just projections. They weren't an actual bid. So you don't want to, might not want to play your hand too soon. So, okay.
Hey, any further questions for myself or the manager? Okay, clerk's report?
I have a written report, written report in the packet, but I thought I'd just tell you guys who declared for the candidates. Council seat D, Robert Beadle and Malina Meyer. Council seat E, Ann Schaefer and Gary Graham. School board, there are two seats available, and they just, they're not dedicated seats, so it's just the high, high vote getters. Brett Bradford, Dan Ream, and Pete Hefner. And for CCMC Authority Board, also two seats, just the high vote getters, Dan Ream, Linnea Ronagard, and Amanda Wees. I'll get some sample ballots printed shortly, although not this week because I'm heading to Valdez tomorrow for Elks. And then got a few absentee ballots to mail out, and then just prepare for the March 6 election.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, council? Okay, we have staff quarterly reports in the packets. Also correspondence, council?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Beadle.
I just want to thank all the department heads and staff for their good reports and good job. I'd like to pick, of course, so, we're, just Susan Huslop, she had a great line in there. I'd like, it was, the answer lies in being open to change. It's difficult sometimes, but it seems it's worked for her. So thank you to all the heads there and your good work.
Any other comments, council, correspondence, or staff reports? Okay, ordinances and resolutions. Ordinance 1162, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Cordova, Alaska, repealing and reenacting Cordova Municipal Code, Chapter 8.40 Marijuana Regulation, removing the expired temporary prohibition against marijuana establishments within the city of Cordova, adopting regulations for such establishments, repealing and reenacting Cordova Municipal Code, Chapter 18.60, conditional use permits to include commercial marijuana facilities as a conditional use within the city, and clarifying the conditional use process applicable to such facilities. to such facilities. Second reading.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Jones.
I move that we postpone the vote on ordinance 1162 until after we see what happens with the ballot initiative.
I'd second it.
Yeah, so, so I'm trying to think of appropriateness of the motion, so.
I guess I, I think it would be easier for staff if we.
Just move to refer back to.
Put it on the table first, then move to refer to staff.
So we have a motion to approve the ordinance, and we had a second on it?
We didn't have a motion to.
Okay, so we didn't have a motion to the ordinance. Councilman Burton.
So any motion that's made has to be made in the affirmative or, you know, a positive motion. So you get it on the table first and then, and then handle it.
Okay, what's the will of counsel?
Move to adopt ordinance 1162.
Second.
The first is a discussion.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance 1162. Councilman Gard, would you like to speak to your motion?
I just want to get it on the table for discussion. It sounds like it's become a contentious enough issue, but it may behoove us for the mental health of our community to have a vote on this publicly before we enact anything.
Question on the petition. At this point, then what's the timeline? What's the time required? The petition's already been turned in.
Correct. I think we have to rule on, I and the attorney have to rule on the sufficiency and the legality of it by, the other two are the 12th, but I think that one is like the 22nd or 23rd of February.
Then, how many days do we need in advance for a vote?
If counsel calls a special election, it would be, the quickest that could happen is two months from the date of the resolution calling the special election.
So April would be the earliest we could have if it wasn't certified.
Is two months.
23rd year of fame?
Yeah, so if counsel had at the March 1st meeting, for instance, it would be two months from that, so, or the first meeting in March, so, is that right?
Yes.
Yeah, so it'd be basically that first meeting in May, maybe at the earliest, so.
Well, around the 1st of May for the election.
Yeah, if counsel called a special election on the first week of March, so. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance 1162, discussion?
How much may I have a question?
Councilman Schaefer?
So the ordinance, though, before, it doesn't affect the petition at all, does it?
Uh, no, this.
This were to pass, the petition can still come up.
Yes.
I mean, well.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Weiss?
Oh, I would, I would also be in favor of putting this to a special election. I was, I was a strong speaker to, to letting the people put a voter initiative in, and 251 votes in five days is, is pretty overwhelming, and it kind of puts my, what I had to say in my place. I would, I am in favor of, of posting a special election for this.
Okay, so the discussions on the ordinance you have in front of you, so if, I guess there could, a motion could be made to put that mechanism in place, but.
Not right now. Not, this is on.
Councilman Jones.
Mr. Mayor, you know, we, we had a lot of discussion on this last meeting, and we didn't have as much community turnout as we do now. I was on the fence that whole meeting, and I was swayed by the fact that in 2014, it was a two-thirds majority of the community voting for, you know, legalizing marijuana in the state of Alaska. And since then, I have heard from many members of the community, and, you know, I'm not afraid to admit when I was wrong, I'm just afraid to stay wrong. And I would, I would like to push for, you know, getting a special election. I don't want to wait a full year, like has been discussed in the past. And, you know, I would, I would be in favor of tabling this until after such a vote, and if that is not the, the will of counsel, now we'll be voting no on this ordinance.
Okay, Councilman Jones, I think if we table it, then you need to pick it up by the end of the meeting. If, if the motion is postponed, you can pick a date to postpone it to, and then.
Refer to staff. It can come back later time when.
I just move to refer to staff. That way it stays on second reading.
Do you have a motion to refer ordinance 1162 to staff?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, Councilman Allison.
The reason for that is to, to leave it on second reading, because if the vote is in the affirmative to allow it, then we are going to need these regulations. So I don't think it really matters if, if we went forward with these regulations today or before or after a vote, nothing's going to get really done as long as we know a vote is coming anyway. Pretty sure I know how that vote's going to turn out, but we'll let the people decide on that, and I think that leaving it on second reading doesn't push us back another month and a half to making regulations if it does, if it is approved.
Okay, so, and just, so your intention is that this, that staff would finish and attorney would finish reviewing the petition. If it's legitimate, the council decides to schedule a special election, then staff could then.
The intent would be only bringing this back to counsel if the vote is affirmative to allow marijuana.
For the second, okay. Who would the second like to speak to that?
Yeah, I just, yeah, that'll work if we refer back to staff and can come back up as a second reading after the, after the vote. That was my intention.
Okay.
Thank you.
Marijuana is still legal in Cordova right now, and people still could move ahead.
Yeah.
But obviously.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I, that was a question I had. So even if we don't go ahead and pass this ordinance, it's still legal, it can still be, businesses can still go ahead with their business plan, correct?
That's correct. It's legal by state law, but there's no reg, this ordinance isn't in place, so there isn't really any jurisdiction or regulation at the city's hands, so. Councilman, Manager Lanning?
Well, you know, in the very beginning, mentioned way last year upon my arrival, that at some point I would bring a regulation to you for your consideration. 1162 does not limit your ability to have a, an establishment under state law. 1162 was our ability to regulate locally and put perhaps additional restrictions through the conditional use process. This way, we would, we would get to address every single application that came to us so that we could evaluate them separately. And as I had proposed during that process, to allow us to tax that business as you thought appropriate, but the tax was removed from the ordinance, and so this is only a regulatory framework for us locally. So, you know, if there's a, if there's a, my understanding is if there's a, a vote to have it locally, they can still have it under state law, so.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Schaefer. Uh, yes, go ahead, Councilman Schaefer.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm cutting out a little bit, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm, I think we should vote on this tonight. Instead of putting it to the table, it's just putting in a regulatory framework for something that is legal in town. In this way, it'll be regulated, and we'll be able to charge tax on it. And then with the petition, it can come to a vote before the city.
Okay, further discussion on the motion to refer?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Beetle.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote in favor of tabling it.
Referring it.
I, I don't think that any, anything we do tonight, whether we vote for it or against it, is gonna, is just gonna make us for targets on half the community and the other half. We should have had the, the vote on the ballot on the 6th, but that didn't happen. Came to the petition, so I don't see why we can't wait to see what the community says, and then move forward then, and then we don't have to have the backlash to counsel for voting wrong. And the motion for moving the tax, it was for the 12%, the intent wasn't, there's still a sales tax on all purchases in Cordova. It was, the intent of that motion in the minutes there on the last meeting was to remove the 12%, not, not remove taxes period on it.
Cert tax? Yeah, the 6% cert tax, which would have added to the 6% sales tax, bringing the total tax to 12%. Okay, further discussion?
Most of the cert tax, not the sales tax.
That's correct. So further discussion on the motion to refer?
For that point of clarification, where does that leave the one applicant that is put in for a license? Does that put them in limbo, does it stop their process? What does it do?
Well, really, it doesn't change anything in terms of, it's legal by state law, and so as far as the city's concerned, it just doesn't enact this ordinance at this time, that's all.
If a new applicant to the state were to come about next week or whatever, we would still.
The city would still have no jurisdiction over that, so. Okay, further discussion? And I'm going to ask for a roll call vote, please.
So this is a motion to refer 1162. Ken Jones?
Yes.
Jeff Gard?
Joe.
James Weiss?
Yes.
Robert Beetle?
Yes.
James Burton?
Yes.
Ann Schaefer? We might have lost Ann. David Allison?
Yes.
And, and are you back? Oh, shoot. Okay, motion carries 6-0.
Okay, so ordinance 1162 is referred to staff. Ordinance 1163 is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cordova, Alaska, amending Cordova Municipal Code, Section 5.40.030C, CM, Cordova Municipal Code 5.40.030D, and Cordova Municipal Code 5.40.030AB, concerning sales tax exemptions to decrease the cap on a single purchase transaction sale or service from $7,500 to $3,000. First reading.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance 1163.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Councilman Jones, speak to your motion.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, like I said earlier, I, I think what we did here with this tax was wrong. I think there's unintended consequences of driving sales out of town. I think that in driving those sales out of town, we're actually going to have a, there's not going to be a net gain. We're going to lose sales, we're going to lose that sales tax from those sales, and, you know, I just, I see this having unintended consequences that are going to hamper business in this community. And we've talked a lot with our strategic planning about growing our pie, and taxes, just shrink it. I mean, we're just going to drive businesses and people out of town if we keep raising our tax burden and the cost of living. And I think that we need to, that we need to bring this back, this sales tax back down to the 3,000 level. I appreciate all the work we put into it, but in the last five, six months, we've had a council member recalled, we have three ballot initiatives that are going into effect. We need to listen to the community better. This, I mean, it's, we, we're elected for the will of the community, and right now, the way I look at it, we are not representing our constituents very well. Thank you.
Councilman Weiss?
Already having a, an ordinance put to a, or to be referred back to staff to put to a vote, I, I think at the very least, we would need to consider referring this back to staff to put it on the same ballot. If, if.
Microphone, please.
I'm sorry about that, Robert. I, I said already having one ordinance move to be put on a ballot for a vote, we, we would need to, I, I think we need to consider putting this on the same ballot, and even the next one. We didn't have one person come speak in favor of these taxes tonight, and, and whether it's, whether we made the mistake or not, or it was right or wrong. I know we put a lot of work into this. I put a lot of work into this. Everyone did. Staff. It, I, I would, whoa. I, I would, I would make a motion to refer this back to staff and get it put on the ballot.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Burton?
Did so.
Clarification for counsel and for the audience and those listening online. My first question is, how does this affect the timeline of, of these taxes? Or in this case, this is essentially a repeal of what we've already done. So would this not take place until January 1st, 2019? Are we still stuck for the rest of 2018 with the, the increase on the cap and motor fuel tax, or hell on that? And also, how would a vote affect those in, in the same light?
Okay, I just, just to maintain order, we had a motion to refer, but there was no second, so you're asking a question that speaks to the motion on the table, which is ordinance 1163 with a question. Maybe Susan can, City Clerk can help me out here, but there is a petition to repeal the tax, and that would be, what's the timeline on that, is a question?
So February 12th is Monday, so that will be certified by Monday.
And then a special election can't be called any less than two months from that date.
Correct.
So then, then it becomes the will of counsel, Councilman Burton, whether the council wants to, votes to put, hold a special election for that item, which would put it in end of April, first part of May timeframe. If council chose not to call a special election, it would be, or call a special election any time after that. Otherwise, it would go to the next regular election in March of 2019, which would basically leave it in effect for the rest of the year. And the same is true of the other tax ordinance.
Correct. If these ordinances had been put to a referendum petition during the 30-day wait period, the law could not have gone into effect until such time as it was approved or denied by the voters.
As it, as it stands now, council passed these ordinances last October. The city's revised all of its codes to accommodate it, and the businesses have put the processes in place, the taxes are being collected, and this would reverse that. Either a special election or passing these ordinances would overturn that essentially.
Yes. If council passed them today and passed second reading next time, then it would be a 30-day wait period for somebody to put those to a referendum petition possibly, and the taxes would be effective until the 30-day time period is up.
Okay, so just, just to make it crystal clear, let's say this passes tonight, it goes to second reading, passes there, and then we go through that 30-day wait period, then the repeal would be effective upon the end of that 30-day waiting period, correct?
Yes.
Let's just say May 1st, for instance, just to make it easy for math.
Okay.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure that we were all clear on it. Thank you.
Okay, further discussion?
Can I ask one question here?
Councilman Gard?
And it may have been answered in that, I'm having a hard time picking up everything on the phone. And I understand if this gets approved tonight, second reading, next meeting, an on-down line with the May 1st would be the date. If we put this on a, to a vote of the public. If we put this on a, to a vote of the public with, say, the marijuana initiative referendum, what would be the effective date then, one way or the other?
Uh, probably the first week of May, if council wanted to have the special election for these at the same time as, um, a vote on, uh, the marijuana ordinance.
And then the vote left to be-
The special election would be on the already passed ordinance.
And I know we've gotten a lot of feedback recently on these, but in all the time we're doing our public hearings, doing these, there are very few voices that were screaming against these, and for as many voices as we had against them, we had as many votes for them. That were in favor of them because they liked the services they were getting from the city of Cordova. So anyway, that's my two cents worth.
Can, can I just add something?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, uh, just a second, Councilman Beetle, I think, uh, Manager Lanning wanted to, um, uh, an- answer Councilman Guard's question.
1163 is repealing an already passed ordinance, so-
It's amending.
Well, it's amending, it's dropping the cap down. So if 1163 doesn't need to go to, it seems a special election to me, all you'd have to do is, you'd have to somehow figure out how to change the existing ordinance.
Well, that's what this is doing.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
No, I understand that, but I wondered if the timelines were different between an elect, or a vote by the people and what they wanted to do about this.
They're pretty close.
Pretty close. They're, they're about the same if the council wanted to have, have a special, um, election all hand, all on the same day, so, Councilman Jones.
Mr. Mayor, I don't, I don't believe that's exactly correct. If we were to move these forward and then move them forward through a second reading, and then there's a 30-day wait, it would be, um, the beginning of, of April, mid-April, that they would be repealed. Um, if we were to wait for the marijuana ordinance to go through its 30 days and then put them all on a, a special election the first week of May, we would have to then wait for those votes to be certified, which takes another two weeks, and uh-
Nine days after the election.
So-
Yeah.
It would be end of May for these to be repealed.
Yeah, so maybe, maybe a month, month difference.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, Councilman Beetle, sir.
And if tonight's the first reading on it, we have another meeting, we have enough time to have a reading in, um, February, then it would be like the first part of April, so it'd be a whole month earlier, that's, you know, there'd be, there'd be a big lag between a repeal and a vote.
Uh, further discussion? Councilman Allison?
Yeah, I guess, um, the way I look at this is, is, you know, we can solve it, we can, we can, um, we can repeal, or however you wanna call it, revert back to the 3,000, but we have to decide how we're gonna make that up in our budget, and that's what I see as the, as the bigger question, and, and there's lots of solutions for that. Uh, you know, I'm not in favor of closing the pool or bidarchy or anything like that. I think we've cut pretty much where we can cut, we've reduced employees, we've, we've cut to the bone everywhere else, we don't have any capital funds, um, on and on and on, but uh, but I don't want to put the whole burden on the property taxpayers. That is putting the burden on 48 percent of the, of the public and not spreading it out. These taxes spread that out amongst, um, a broader range of, of people. Uh, so I don't wanna end up in that situation where we end up repealing these and then get to the, end of the property tax, and, and that's the only place we have to make up our, our budget. I have thrown out the solution before, I would need five other council members to agree with me and the mayor, or six council members and me to agree to, um, take out the difference, uh, from the permanent fund, uh, to pay for, um, that portion of the bonds from the school, uh, which is why a lot of that money was put there in the first place, uh, but I would need, you know, obviously that takes seven votes, six council members and the mayor, or seven council members to, to do that, and if, you know, I'm, I'm happy to pass this tonight, um, not refer it to staff or not wait for a vote, we can avoid the whole vote thing completely, if we can agree on where that money's gonna come from. Um, and, um, and I see the, the place for that is, is coming from the permanent fund, for those bonds, so, anyway, that's, that's my thought. If we, if we don't have a solution for, for making up our budget, then, then I'm not in favor of, of getting rid of the tax, and I'll, I'll, uh, support the tax at the ballot. But, uh, I don't like taxes any more than anybody else does. I don't wanna balance it on the, on the property taxpayers, so, I'd like to hear my fellow council members' thoughts on, on how they intend to balance the budget if this is to pass.
Councilman Jones?
Yeah, well, I, uh, I believe I brought that option to the table six months ago when we first were talking about these taxes. Um, you know, we earned 900 odd thousand, um, in our investment income from the permanent fund. Last year, we just had a work session with UBS Financial. We also had 723,000 excess fish tax, so we hadn't above and beyond what we budgeted. Um, this is all new information from when we passed these taxes, and it's part of the grounds of me wanting to bring these back up for repeal. Uh, I don't see how we can earn 1.6 million dollars and expect to, I mean, just keep raising taxes on our constituents. Um, other new information, we've had a new council member seated since then, um, that, that seat didn't have a chance to, uh, take place in, in those votes and in that discussion. Um, also, the, uh, you know, the $300,000 that we were trying to raise with these two, with, with these two taxes, the, the tax cap in with the motor fuel tax, if we, what I, what my idea is now is to use some of this excess fish tax revenue, sit in our central general fund, whatever you wanna call it, um, you know, balance the budget with that. We already raised property tax, we made 60,000 there, we raised, or we got rid of the compensatory discount, we raised 30,000 there. Um, so if we were to take the remaining 250 or 300, whatever the number was that we would still need, out of that excess fish tax, it would still leave us with $400,000 or better, um, to, to replenish our cash accounts, um, and, and to save for a low fish tax year, 'cause we all know it's gonna happen at some point or another, that's why we went through the strategic planning, that's why we set our fish tax at 800, not at the 10-year average of 1.1, um, so we could put that 300,000 on the good years, we could put money aside to offset the bad years. Well, we could still accomplish that goal and balance the budget without having to leave these taxes in place, and that is why I'm pushing so strongly in that direction, is because, um, when we looked at these taxes in the first place, we didn't know what our fish tax numbers were gonna be. I believe that I mentioned that they were gonna be higher than we thought, and I was told I didn't know what I was talking about. I understand it's a really difficult place to pinpoint, and we're dealing with that for this next coming year, the, the bad year could be, could be this year, it might not have been last year. So I s, I definitely wanna make sure we save some of this fish tax revenue, and that was why I also was pushing to put that into the permanent fund. But I think that we can balance our budget and live within our means without having to put undue burdens on the businesses, the business owners, and the community members. So that, that's how I suggest balancing the budget, is taking it from the excess raw fish tax that we received in November.
Councilman Allison?
Um, can we balance the budget with not reserve funds, but general fund balance?
Um, I, I don't know the answer to that, on how to appropriate reserves, you know?
You cannot. The, the 18 budget has to equal revenues and expenses. You cannot take money from 17 and put it into the 18 budget.
Yeah. So what we'd have to do is, we, we would have to reduce the budget to match the revenue going forward.
Or raise the fish tax line item.
Yeah, there's, I guess there's a hundred ways to do it. We could, we could move the fish tax money to the permanent fund and allocate from the permanent fund to the, the budget too. You can do a lot of different things, it's just that anytime we mess with that permanent fund coming out, we need six votes, or seven votes, we need six council members and the, and the mayor to do that, so it's, it's, it's not easy to do that if you get two council members that wanna have a hard head and, and not go along, or if, you know, if the mayor has a completely different idea than this one other council member, then you're, you're shocked on that, but, but you're right, we could change the line item of the, of the fish tax, but then that blows our 2020 concept of trying to, trying to keep that even across the board. Now all of a sudden, we're back to where we were before, going up and down, up and down with that tax item.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Burton?
There's like several layers of this that are coming to mind, but, you know, we, we would have to, I think, pass a budget amendment if this were, um, repealed or whatever we're gonna call it. Um, with regard to, just from a cash flow perspective, and where we ended 16, and, and where our audit numbers came in from there, and then the influx of, of the additional raw fish tax money that was unexpected in 17, I mean, I think there's a lot of things in play that, until I had more answers from, I certainly wouldn't wanna make a decision on, on doing away with this tonight, from that standpoint. And then everything that Mr. Allison said earlier about being able to replace, um, revenue, that's a whole other struggle, and I'm, I'm gonna tell you right now, I'm not gonna vote to repeal these until we have something identified, whether it's a, a reduction in service to, uh, Cordova, essentially, you know, whether it's programs or departments or, or whatever, uh, to make up for that. So, we've gotta cross that bridge before I'm, I'm comfortable. We've already cut as much as we were comfortable cutting before and even beyond, and there's still more work to be done, so until we have a, a better plan on this, I'm, I'm gonna vote no on repealing.
Councilman Allison? Uh, uh, Councilman Allison and then Councilman Beetle?
When, when was the audit presentation gonna be? We haven't got a schedule yet?
No.
I hope, I hope in March.
And that's fiscal year 2016.
62, let's do it.
Yeah. Uh, Councilman Beetle?
Yeah, uh, Mr. Jones kinda said it there, we, uh, we, um, we passed the budget and these taxes without knowing that the, we had the raw fish tax, and that was the reason why I feel that they, they would have to move forward, it's the balance of budgets, but totally after knowing that the raw fish tax money was there and reported going into the general fund, it can be, um, there's rollover. Um, but the problem we're in, the reason we're in this situation is 'cause the people in the communities don't have disposable income to buy things and spend the money. They're hurting also.
Uh, Councilman, Councilman Beetle, could you speak to the motion, please, 1163? I think I'm-
Talking just as much as everybody else is damn afraid on how to pay and how, why not to, so, okay?
I'm just trying to help counsel out, Councilman Beetle, whether you're in favor or against the, uh, motion.
You sure let it, yeah. I'm in favor of the motion, shouldn't have been implemented in the first place. Mr. Mayor?
Uh, Councilman Garden?
Yeah, I'd like to echo Councilmember Burton's comments there. I mean, we spent this whole long process developing all this, and the time to speak to it when business would have been easy to take care of was while we were developing it. And it, and I'm not trying to defend what council came up with or whatever, but it's pretty late in the game to be trying to make on all these changes, and then to make them without having any replacement budget dollars for it. I mean, we've been operating on a budget that has no supplies budgeted for, we have no training budgeted for, we don't have cop, capital costs for, uh, new equipment, repairs and replacement of equipment, I mean, we've been operating on less than a bare-bones budget, and to now say that we are flush and we can use this other money for whatever we want without building up reserves doesn't ring real true with me. So, unless we can figure out how we're gonna deal with the budget, I'm voting no.
Um, Councilman Schaefer, you online?
I, we lost her at about 8:30, I think. Oh, unless she's back.
Councilman Schaefer?
He texted me a little bit ago.
Okay, uh, further discussion on, um, so she texted you and she dropped offline?
Correct. Yes, she did.
Okay, so she knows she's offline?
I think so, but I don't know if she got my text response, 'cause it was like 12 minutes later.
Okay, I just wanted to, I didn't hear any feedback, and I think this is something all of council would like to vote on, so, um, Councilman McAllison?
Yeah, I get, um, to move things along, I would, I would just as soon approve this tonight, 'cause this doesn't really do anything tonight, except move us to the next step, and it, it gives us at least a couple of weeks to, uh, come up with a, a better solution for, for making up our budget, or, uh, you know, we can always decline it at that point in time, or, or defer it, or refer it back to staff at, at that point in time if we haven't had enough time for audit presentations or whatever, yeah. But to move this along tonight, I think passing this on first reading is, is, doesn't hurt or, or really help anybody, it just moves us to the next step, but it doesn't hurt anybody, anyway.
Okay, uh, further discussion? Okay, uh, roll call vote, please.
So on 1163, David Allison?
Yes.
Ann Schaefer is absent. Ken Jones?
Yes.
Robert Beetle?
Yes.
James Wees?
Yes.
James Burton?
No.
Jeff Guard?
No.
Motion carries four two.
Okay, uh, ordinance 1164, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Cordova, Alaska, repealing chapter 5.39 motor fuel excise tasks, uh, first reading.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance 1164.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Uh, Councilman Jones, you wanna speak to your motion?
Yeah, I just wanna echo a lot of my comments, um, from the previous discussion. Uh, I think that increasing the cost to do business in our community and to live in our community is something that we should avoid if we're gonna be moving forward on trying to grow our economy and grow our taxable pie that we keep talking about with the strategic play, plan. Um, I believe that this will be counterproductive, it'll drive some of the large fuel ups out of the community. I've had discussions with, uh, inland fish producers, North Pacific, uh, I've had discussions with Triad Seafoods, I've had discussions with Copper River, and they already, um, are sharpening their pencils, um, in regards to costs raising and where they fuel their tenders. I know personally, as a businessman that spends a lot of money in this community, that I also would be looking at some cost, cost-cutting measures if, if, uh, tax obligations were raised or to remain in place, I guess they've already raised, so, um, for those reasons, I would support the repeal of the motor vehicle fuel excise tax.
Uh, Councilman Beetle?
I concur with what Mr. Jones said and what David Allison said on the last one, is we keep saying root and pole here, we have time still to figure out budgetary needs, so I'll be voting in favor.
Uh, discussion? Councilman Wies?
I, I'm just gonna echo everything I've said. There's, this is just like everything else. There's a voter initiative to, to overturn it if we don't, if we don't figure something else out. Um, and, uh, I think it's valid that we put it back on the table and, uh, find a way to get it right. I don't, I don't see this going to a vote in passing also.
Uh, further discussion? Councilman Allison?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I, um, once again, I, I, I will be in favor of it to move it forward. Um, I'm not necessarily in favor of it. Now, I, I think if we remove the cap, the four cents a gallon isn't gonna drive anybody to go to Valdez or, or Whittier or anywhere else to get their fuel for four cents a gallon. But if that cap stayed in, I, I know the combination, uh, isn't necessarily a good thing. So, but, but to move it along and to gather more information, if, if that combination worked to happen, um, I'll be in favor of, of passing it on first reading tonight. Again, first reading doesn't harm anybody and it, it keeps the process going.
Uh, further discussion?
Just one comment, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Councilman Burton?
I was gonna voice this the last go around, but I, I think I was talking at the same time somebody else was. Anyway, uh, when it comes to the other funding sources and the use of the permanent fund, I'm gonna vote no on withdrawing money from the permanent fund at this point in time based on how heavy the withdrawal rate has been over the last couple of years to balance the budget in times we, you know, we didn't have time to react to the financial situation that we encountered due to, you know, circumstances beyond our control, whether it was state, uh, federal or state reimbursement rates or, or what have you. So going forward, we're gonna have to figure out some kind of a solution. I, you know, I expect this one to go just like the last one did, and, and that's fine. But we gotta figure something else out. Um, permanent fund to me is off limits. We just got done listening to UBS talk about how much, uh, those withdrawals impact our earnings over time. And, and I'm a believer in trying to put something back before we take anything more out.
Uh, further discussion, council? Hey, uh, roll call vote, please.
Um, Ann Schaefer is absent. James Burton?
No.
Jeff Gard?
No.
Robert Beetle?
Yes.
David Allison?
Yes.
Ken Jones?
Yes.
James Wies?
Yes.
Motion carries four-two.
Okay, council, we don't have any unfinished business. Um, new business, item twenty-three, uh, council action to make lot three, lot five, Northville available on the two thousand eighteen land disposal maps.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Allison?
I've moved to make lot three block five available on the city lot, city maps. Second.
I have a motion and second. Uh, would you like to speak to your motion, Councilman Allison?
Uh, what is it? Does a property have to be available on the map for us to decide we're gonna sell it?
I believe so.
And what's the, where, where is the requirement for that? What, what makes it required to be?
What's the requirement? It has to be available?
Yeah, my, my truck might not be available for sale, but you've got the cash and it's, it's yours.
The land disposal maps themselves are a policy that we've created because code says that the city manager and city planner have to be able to identify a property that's available to move forward with a letter of interest. So past practice has been due to that code, that property must be made available before you can move forward with a letter of interest, which just starts the disposal process.
But in this case, we've already, we've already done that. We're already past that letter of interest step. Yes, we are. We're, we're gonna decide later tonight if we're going to direct the city manager to negotiate a contract. That's past the letter of interest stage.
At the last city council meeting, the council amended the land disposal maps to make that lot not available.
I recognize that, but I'm just saying, whether it's available or not available or, you know, I, I understand that it gives staff some direction on what to do, but you've, you've already, we already decided that as of approving the last set of maps, that we've given staff the authority or the permission or whatever you wanna call it to review letters of interest for lots that are on that map as not available.
Correct.
And to move them forward if they so decide to the planning commission and that council. I just.
It's kind of a process.
I'll vote in favor of putting it on the available, but I just think that that's kind of a, our maps are kind of a useless act of, of time-consuming nonsense. If you ask me, if, you know, if the city owns a piece of property and somebody wants to buy it, then if we're willing to sell it, then we should oughta sell it. Whether it's marked on that map is available or not is, is immaterial, uh, in my opinion. But anyway, that's my comments on that. I'll, I'll vote to approve, uh, moving it for sale at this point in time.
One comment in favor of the map stuff, though. If I could speak to it, Mr. Mayor?
Uh, Councilman Garden?
Yeah. Um, in the past, there've been some problems with, uh, sales of city property being considered sweetheart deals, not advertised enough, this and that. But the more we can set up a system that guarantees stuff's done in front of the public to where nobody's worried about sweetheart deals or things done under the table, the better off we all are. So I'd be in favor of moving this motion forward. For no other reason than that.
Uh, further discussion, council?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Beetle?
I'll, I'll be voting no on this one. And the reason being is we're talking about other plans, comprehensive plans, waterfront plans. Uh, you're going back to DC to look for, uh, money for harbor expansion. And we're, there's been talks of, over there, over by that lot there, expanding. And if we get rid of our upland and we expand, try to expand that later for harbor, um, it just makes it that much more difficult and costly for the city, the harbor. Um, there is other land. I would, I, I'd like to amend and, and refer back to staff to give the staff a chance to see if there's other property available that would suit Mr. Brown's needs and not, um, you know, let us do our contingent, our contingent plans, our waterfronts and see what, see what we need before we get rid of lots. A lot of those lots over there have been sold already in years. And there's at least a half a dozen lots sitting there waiting for somebody that would sell through this, through their project. So I, I think there might be other options. And I, I'd like to look at them before we move forward with a, a sale that causes grief later and still satisfy Mr. Brown.
Uh, further discussion, council?
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, Councilman Burton?
I thought on the last go around that there was exactly what Robert just said, that it was a, a referral back to staff to try to, to work through some of these questions. And I didn't see, unless I missed it, I didn't see anything where that discussion was taking place.
Uh, we, we have staff here to speak to that.
So we did meet with Mr. Brown and present several other options. He ended up going back to this lot. So that's, you know, why it is where it is right now.
Okay, I appreciate that. So on a second, um, comment then, we've, we have been dealing with this lot and actually the other one, the little impound lot, and the sliver of land that the harbor, um, had next to the, the original Bayside storage building. When with the harbor in that, I think it was two thousand thirteen, to, to be able to have a chance to use these lots for a, uh, enough time to, to be able to develop the area down there. And they've been doing a pretty good job so far. And we have a recommendation from the Harbor Commission to not dispose of this lot. And as much as I wanna see Mr. Brown's business, and I really, really, really do, um, we have some of the, the lowest upland land in relation to our commercial fleet size of any port that I've been in in the Pacific Northwest. It's tiny, the amount of area that we have. And we're getting rid of, you know, our, our last lot. And, you, you know, by going down this road, I'd really like to set up, find a different solution before doing that.
Uh, further discussion, council? Hearing non, uh, roll call vote?
So I'm making that lot available. Uh, Robert Beetle?
No.
David Allison?
Yes.
James Wies?
Yes.
Ann Schaefer is absent. Jeff Gard?
Yes.
James Burton?
No.
Ken Jones?
Yes.
Motion carries four-two.
Okay, uh, next item is council action on disposal and method of disposal of lot three, block five, Northville.
Mr. Mayor? I move to dispose of lot three, block five, Northville Development as outlined in municipal, Cordova Municipal Code five dash two-two dash zero-six-zero by direct negotiation with Robert Brown, doing business as Saddle Point Marine Machine LLC to lease or purchase the property.
Thank you, thank you. I have a motion and second. Would you like to speak to your motion, Councilman Jones?
Yeah, for me, um, it's this proposal or nothing. Uh, the only reason I voted to make this lot as available was because I would like to see Robert Brown's proposal go through. We've heard a lot of community input about how this would be a great business. We've talked about growing our pie. I keep going back to that every comment I make, it seems like. And, uh, I understand that we're gonna lose something that's very dear to the Harbor Commission. I'm on the Harbor Commission. I don't wanna see it go away. I was really hoping that he could find something else. Um, doesn't appear that that was the case. And, uh, also coming, coming down the pike, you, you guys will be seeing a, a request from the Harbor Commission to enter into a lease for the, for the lots down there. Um, I really urge council to consider leasing the remaining lots so that the harbor doesn't lose anymore. Um, this is a really tough, tough one for me, because I didn't wanna see it go away. But at the same time, I think that this proposal would be more of a benefit to our fleet and to the community than, um, and, and to the city budget than, um, long-term storage. I think there's other long-term storage availability around town with private business.
Uh, Councilman Allison?
Yeah, a couple, a couple of questions first, I guess, before, um, I'll tell a story. How did the harbor, like Councilmember Jones alluded to, um, they wanted a lease for the other, how, how did the harbor get to have that property and get revenues off of that and collect revenues off of that when it's city property? How did the harbor get that? Maybe?
I have, I have a vague understanding of it. In two thousand and thirteen, the community went through multiple, um, harbor, Southville, Northville development area, strategic planning, uh, whatever you would wanna call it. And outlined in that plan was a way to alleviate congestion from the Baja Taco, um, launch ramp. And, uh, and, and one of those ideas was to develop the Northville area to attract our commercial fishing fleet with the trailerable vessels, um, to do their business over there and to launch their boats and do their maintenance. Um, so there wasn't quite the congestion behind the harbor master office and, and next to Baja Taco. Um, it has succeeded in that. Um, the plan was implemented starting in two thousand and thirteen, and now five years later, we've seen that it's really, um, it's really been a really nice thing for the fleet and for the, even the recreational boaters in our community, um, that don't wanna be right in the middle of the hustle and bustle of the busy harbor. You know, they're just going out to cheat day for the day.
I, I understand all of that, but I'm just wondering how an enterprise fund, which is essentially a separate business, can, uh, you know, but I can't rent a corner of Shoresides Lot down there and, and have somebody park their boat on it and collect their revenue from it. And, and me get to keep the revenue, it's, it's gonna be there. So I, that was just a, a question off the side. The other question would be, uh, we got the resolution from the Harbor Commission, but there was no, uh, like with the planning commission, we usually get some notes and, you know, how the vote went and things like that. Do you, how many people, how many of the Harbor Commission attended this special meeting? And, and what was the, was the vote on it?
Everybody was in attendance and it was unanimous.
Unanimous to leave it, to keep it. Okay. Um, now for my story, um, you could use a hundred different analogies, I suppose, but, uh, you know, if, if you've got a plate of cookies out there and all the cookies get eaten, but, but the last one, we, we hear around here all the time. This is, you know, I've been hearing it for twenty years. This is our last waterfront lot. This is our last waterfront lot. This is our last waterfront lot. Uh, you know, and as, as we go on. Um, a council member once told me that, that, um, that if you, if you get rid of all your land, I guess, you know, we've got the ability to make more. It might not be as cheap as, as it could oughta be, but, but it, it doesn't do any good for that, for that last cookie to, to sit on the plate. You know, people can starve, uh, while the cookie's out there able to eat. So I guess in short, I'm, I'm in favor of, you know, if somebody's interested in a piece of property that we have, um, that's really not being used. We had a, you know, a two-year argument over whether to sell that strip next to Bayside over there, but, oh God, we're gonna need that in the next two years. Well, it's been five years since, since that happened, and I haven't seen anybody park anything but a couple of rocks over there and, and maybe a, a boat trailer that could have been put somewhere else. So, um, if, if we run out of land, you know, that needs to be our priority is, is what do we do to, to make more? And we, we're, and we're on that path in a couple of different areas. But, um, I think if a business owner or, or any individual is wanting to, to improve a piece of property and, and to utilize it, and it's, you know, obviously, it's not right in front of the ramp. We're not gonna, gonna block that with a, a big building and not be able to use the ramp. But this, this lot isn't, uh, encroaching upon any of that. I, I think we can find other, uh, places for boat storage. And, uh, and, uh, so I'm, I'm in favor of, of at least moving this forward. It doesn't mean that they're gonna have a deal or negotiate a deal if there's gonna be a building there next month, but, but it certainly moves us forward and, and gets us into the negotiating. So, um, I'm in favor of the motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman, uh, Burton?
Well, I appreciate everybody's comments so far. I disagree with the ability to easily make more land. Otherwise, you know, we probably have to fill it from the Rose Lodge Lighthouse all the way to the burn pile, you know, by a team for a day. But anyway, uh, that's you've, you're said and done, is my point. And it costs an atrocious amount of money. And here we are squabbling over three hundred thousand dollars in, uh, revenue creation. There's no way we're gonna fill an acre, let alone many acres. But aside from that, let's just move past that and, and, and go down the road of disposing, of making this lot available and then taking a disposal process. My concern with negotiating directly is that we're missing a step in involving planning and zoning. And I know that we've kind of gone away from at least some of the grading criteria, but at least in that process, it allowed everybody to have an understanding of how much it was going to take to actually create and build one of these buildings. I think everybody that's put in a proposal in the last five years that I've been on council has grossly underestimated how much it costs. And all I would wanna know before we go down the road of disposing the property is that the person that's making that application knows that they're not gonna build a warehouse for three hundred for $300,000. It's probably going to be a million or something by the time they get done with, you know, the concrete work and the, the steel framing and the sprinkler systems for commercial building and all the things that are going to have to happen. I would want that layer in there somehow, some way so that, so that's understood by whoever the proposer is, because we've seen this time and time and time again, with things are stalled, the person doesn't have an understanding of how much it's going to cost. And then for whatever reason, at that point, it can't happen. So I'm not sure that a direct, a direct negotiation is also consistent with our past practice with the laws. And I'd like to try to maintain whatever consistency we can.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry, is that Councilman Beadle?
It is.
Yes.
We talked about it last meeting. Land development policy is not just land sales policy. And I think we're jumping ahead of the gun. But this is Mr. Burton said, there's six other properties that you've sold that are sitting, waiting for someone to develop that all for good intentions. And we've got another one after this agenda item that changed their minds. So I, I, I would like to see this put on hold until we have a land development policy that ensures that if somebody is moving forward, that they really know what they're getting into and that there's not just a bunch of land sitting around, not collecting property tax for big ideas they're having. There's no, we need a land development policy, I think, before we move forward. I wish we'd just stop land sales, land development until we have it.
Further discussion, counsel? Hearing none, roll call vote.
And Schaefer is absent. James Burton?
Just clarify, this is on direct negotiation.
Correct.
Yes.
No.
Robert Beadle?
No.
David Allison?
Yes.
Ken Jones?
Yes.
Jeff Gard?
Yes.
James Wees?
Yes.
Motion carries four two.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Jones?
Just one comment I forgot to make on that agenda item would be that the planning and zoning's recommendation was to move ahead with the motion as I made it from the last meeting. There was a recommendation by planning and zoning.
Okay. Counsel action on extension of a performance deed of trust. Lot 6, Block 2, South Phil Development Park. This may be discussed in executive session.
Do you need a motion?
It's on page 85.
Or do we need to move into executive session?
Yeah, if the, if the discussion comes up that gets into where you're giving him particulars on how to negotiate, we can go into executive session.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Jones?
I move, move to approve the extension of performance deed of trust for Lot 6, Block 2, South Phil Development Park.
Second? Would you like to speak to your motion, Councilman Jones? Oh yeah, with a specific date. So actually, Councilman Jones here.
There's a recommended motion there.
Oh. I move to extend the substantial completion date of the performance deed of trust to May 1st, 2019 for Tiavu and Camp Two Ho on Lot 6, Block 2, South Phil Development Park.
Okay, so restated motion, concurrency or second? Would you like to speak to that motion, Councilman Jones?
Yeah, I, I just, I think we heard it during public testimony, how much of a benefit that Camp Two's Wild Alaska seafood or salmon has been to our community, not only our community, but to our fishing fleet and the communities around Alaska. I, it is my belief that her business is, has directly impacted our grounds price, which directly impacts and raises our raw fish tax that the city of Curdova receives. So many, so many great things that have happened in the last couple of years due to her being able to expand her fish processing capabilities with her new addition that she did to her market. I would love to see that we move forward with either one of the options that she provided. I think that they'll be a, a great asset to our community and it's the type of thing that we want to develop in our community when we talk about growing the pie.
Councilman Allison?
Yeah, I would agree with Councilmember Jones. The first thing I'd like to point out though, that the, the map in the packet is, isn't incorrect. We had a map here, assumed there was extra copies out there, but it's the, it's the lot next to Camp Two's. The, the drawing in the, in the packet is where Romeo's new building is currently located at, so. But, but yeah, I, I, I think that what Camp Two has done down there is, has, has directly influenced the, the price of copper river fish at least. May not be too popular with Copper River and Trident and, and the others, but it, it is what it is. And I think it has directly influenced the price. And I think we want to do what we can to, to support any businesses. And I, I would hope that, I, I don't think this is, you know, we're just extending the date here. I think there's probably another process somewhere that they need to negotiate with the manager. Something else is going to have to come to us, I assume, to, to change what the requirements of that deed of trust are. I assume that will come to us at a later date. Is that correct? If this, if this passes. So, so I'm, I'm in support of this and, and encourage them to, to work with the manager to do whatever, whatever paperwork needs to be done to, to get us to approve the change in their, in their plans so that, so that it works for them and it works for the community.
Okay, Councilman Jones?
Yeah, so at this time, would we be selecting which exhibit we were, or is that going to be coming back for us? Okay, because I, I just have some questions about coding and so I guess I can leave that for the, the next meeting. I just want to make sure that when we look at these extensions and disposals, that we, we keep in mind that other parties have, have proposals that have been denied or changed due to some of these restrictions and want to make sure we treat businesses equally as best we can. And, and yeah, so as far as which, you know, which one we, we select, I think that we need to support her expansion. But yeah, I just wanted to take a look at that. So if that's good, okay.
And it might be good to encourage you to stop and talk to the manager beforehand too, because I could bring that to all of council. Further discussion, counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Beadle?
I do apologize, I probably should have admitted, I didn't even think about it at the time I was focusing on other things, but I, I've sold fish there. You know, I, I want to declare a conflict, so. I, I, I apologize for not speaking up earlier.
Councilman Beadle, yeah, I, I understand. It's kind of when, you know, when we're a fishing community and machine shops and, and processors and service businesses are proposed, I think there's a li, high likelihood that just about everyone at this table could patronize them at one time or another. So I, I don't see a conflict there unless council wants to declare one. I'm seeing shaking heads no, so we do appreciate that though, Councilman Beadle. And trans, transparency is the, the important thing there for public disclosure, so I, I don't, I don't think that's out of line at all, so thank you. Further discussion regarding the motion? Hearing none, roll call vote please.
Ken Jones?
Yes.
James Wees?
Yes.
Robert Beadle?
What do we, to extend the deed of trust date?
Yes, to May of 19.
Yes.
James Burton?
Yes.
David Allison?
Yes.
And Schaefer is absent. Jeff Gard?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Pending agenda, counsel? Councilman Allison?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, it, it's, it's in our code that we, I don't know, was it approved or the, the hospital's budget needs to come to the council officially formally? I know that we gave them money as part of our budget, but that wasn't approving their budget or, I don't know if we approved it or reviewed, but it's in the code that, that their budget comes to us and, and I think they've got their budget now, so that should come to us sooner than later. I think maybe if we can get a copy of that for the next meeting.
Boy, okay, I'm digging deep back, back in my memory and I forget if that was a concur with the board or whatever. Yeah, I don't remember. And counsel, I'd like, like to also, I think, I know our budgets are thin, but I think it's, would be really important for counsel after the election to schedule some trading. Just, I know we've been really thin on budgets to go to AML and whatnot, but it would be a chance to bring someone here to just walk counsel through roles and responsibilities and, and legal responsibilities and so forth. So just suggest that for maybe in April or May, maybe April, so.
I'm having a really hard time hearing anything. Speak up please.
Yeah, I was kind of distancing myself from the mic. I was suggesting, Councilman Gard, that we just put, in fact, just go ahead and add to the April agenda for counsel training on roles and responsibilities for after the election.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Beadle?
And this, this might be coming up on the next agenda anyway, but I'd like to look at land disposable versus land development policy.
It is, that is on the pending agenda. Are you suggesting you want to have?
Next agenda will be for the next agenda. We're selling property, still don't have a, a, a land disposable, disposal policy, land development policy, excuse me.
Okay, I think Manager Lanin kind of spoke to that in his report, but.
Well, I, I think one of the things that we need to do before we write a formal policy is to have a discussion about what that means to us. You know, I've talked at length about the disposal versus development. And, you know, if you want to sell a piece of property, just sell the thing. But trying to guide the development of that property to something that you like is a difficult proposition. So I think we need to have a philosophical decision or discussion about that. And it was going to bring me to the liking to have a, you know, a strategic planning session as soon as we can, probably that first week in March if we can, to kick off, because we have a lot of budget discussion, we have some other policy discussions that we got to get through, the ordinances that we have to get through. So we have to do a lot of things and I think first week in March if we can, so probably just send out an email to see if we can.
It's on here for 37 or 321.
Okay.
And we will have a work session on land disposal versus land development.
Yeah, I was going to say a, a work session was what I recalled rather than.
I, I like to have a, a strategic planning session and, and have pieces of that broken up into different items that we're going to do. So we still have to talk about quite a few things. So pick a date, we'll go with it. But I think we're going to have to have several. I think, I, I, I'd like to sort of dedicate March to that, to doing that.
Councilman Burton?
When it comes to pending agenda and the second reading for ordinance 1163, 1164 to come back to us, do we also need to have, in case those pass, a budget amendment with some sort of identification of where the funds are going to come from or maybe a prioritized list of services we can choose to reduce with some fad?
I, I think in, the council has to give the manager some kind of direction somewhere.
I, I, you know, to be honest, James, I don't know the, I, I don't know the technical structure of whether you got to bring back a budget amendment or, you know, we overspend numerous line items during the course of a year. And what happens is you have journal adjustments during the audit that, that correct all those and, and basically that money in, for example, in 2016, $604,000. But there was no budget amendment to correct that $600,000 or appropriate funds. So let, let me talk to John tomorrow and I'll, I'll shoot everybody out an email on, you know, procedurally what we'd have to do. I would rather have us at some point adopt a resolution making those changes to the budget so that everybody understands what goes on.
Okay, that's fine. It doesn't have to be on the next meeting with these, but we need to be thinking about it because it's February 7th today.
Yeah.
We still have 10 months and three weeks of 2018 left. And if we end up repealing, you know, $320,000 odd thousand worth of, of revenue that's accounted for in our budget, then there needs to be some kind of a budget amendment that we address going forward so that we, we're still operating on a balanced budget. That's my feeling on it.
I'll get an email out tomorrow.
Yeah, because I think the mail rate gets set, property tax mail rate gets set in.
By June 15.
In June. And in the past, I think there's been a tendency to just throw it on property tax. And then you're going to have the school board probably, their fiscal year starts July 1st and typically you're going to hear from them regarding their budget, so.
Plus, I'm pretty sure they're about to ask for a gym floor.
Before the end of the year, so. Okay, Councilman Allison?
We got half of that.
Can I just say, as, as far as budget, the budget is approved by resolution? So when amendments are made, they are often done by resolution as well. I also feel like with changeover in administrations and finance directors, we've gone away from that sometimes and only because I've done research, sometimes it's a heck of a lot easier to find it if it was done in a resolution. Then you can go find where all the changes were made.
Okay, so I think for purposes of tonight, we can just add a, item eight under future agenda items, budget discussion, whether that's in a workshop or just, just as a placeholder, so.
And can someone remind me exactly where we went with referring 1162? And so you're waiting until the marijuana initiative is certified to then call a special election?
I think it's referred to staff to wait to see if that's certified and then counsel will decide whether or not to schedule a special election and.
So I might throw that on here too.
Okay, that's probably a good idea. So Councilman Beadle, I, I kind of didn't get back to there, but that's kind of where, so we had some dates identified for land disposal versus land development on item three of upcoming meetings for either March 7th or 21st and for a work session there, so.
Okay, I think it's still that we're, we're, we're just doing the same thing over and over again in that, in that last agenda item. They stated that their idea, original idea wasn't very sound, so I, I just don't want to end up in a situation where we're, we are, we are now with, you know, six other properties down.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else for pending agenda, counsel?
Thanks. I'm sorry, we, I think we received correspondence from Scott Bogoff where if we're doing a philosophical discussion, they would like planning and zoning commission. Just, just make sure we include them or, or something. Yeah, it seemed like a point of caution.
Okay, regarding land disposal or land development, okay.
I'll write that on this too, so we can remember.
Like a giant workshop with planning and zoning or something, okay? Yeah, that's right. But I do. Any further discussion? Okay. Audience participation?
Tom Carpenter?
Tom Carpenter, 501 Sunnyside Drive. I'd just like to say thank you to the council and staff for listening to the public. I know you guys got very tough decisions to make, and the budget's been passed, and you might have to consider alterations to that. And maybe there's something that is within the budget right now that maybe you could postpone something that's not critically important to the city for this year, and you could pull money away to fund the offset needed, you know, the $330,000. And then, secondly, I'd like to make a general comment on land disposal. And I think it's important for not only the planning commission, but the city council to consider, when you get a series of proposals or a proposal for a piece of property that the city owns, and the individual or group brings in a well-designed layout, blueprints and what have you, and tells you that they're going to build, you know, a pyramid, and you give them seven years to do it, and year seven comes up, and they ask for an extension, and they ask for another extension. You also have to remember that when you keep doing that and let people modify their existing proposals that the city council originally bought off on, the people that also bid on those pieces of property to build a certain kind of piece of infrastructure or to develop a business are somewhat disenfranchised by the council's ability to keep putting off or allowing people to make changes. That's been extremely clear, that that's happened numerous times in Corrova in the last 20 years. I mean, there's a piece of property right next to my store that I put in a proposal to buy. It's at least seven years ago, and this thing is still a piece of bare ground. Now, I don't really see how the city's really profited from the sale of that piece of property. So I just think that we need to, and I agree with Mr. Beadle and Mr. Burton and other council members that have made the comments, that a land disposal policy is something that is critically important, and it's going to be even more important because we have less land now than we did, and we're going to always have less land in the future. So please take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alan Scott, 204 Board Rockway, North Starlumber. I would just like to point out to council that we sat here with you. There was about five businesses that sat here with you through a lot of the budget process. I don't remember one of us being for a sales tax increase or a fuel tax surcharge. Okay? It just kind of makes me mad when nobody came and talked to us, and then you sit here and tell us that we weren't here. We were here. I think it's like Jim Katz. You guys didn't listen to what we had to say. Okay, and as far as, you guys got to make up $300,000 in your budget. If we do away with, if you do away with these taxes, okay, let's take a look. And now, maybe you can tell me, on us getting away, giving you back the 2% timely filing, how much money was that roughly? Thirty thousand.
Thirty thousand.
Thirty thousand? Okay. 1% of sales tax is $550,000. Okay, so you've already got the 30,000. Do a half a percent sales tax, that's 275,000. There's 300,000 of your budget right there. Pretty simple to do. Nobody's going to squawk about a half a percent sales tax increase. The other thing you have is you have this great big building, and you still have the chamber uptown in a separate building. Bring them down into this building. Make them an office in here. The reason we built that up there is the city was so we had bathrooms up there when the cruise ships were in town. We don't have cruise ships anymore, and we've got a great bathroom here. Sell that building, put it on the tax rolls, bring them girls down here. Put your chamber in the city. I mean, I can, it seems like it's pretty easy to solve the budget. I mean, to come up with that $330,000 seems pretty easy to do, and I don't see why we can't do it that way. That way, it gets everybody in town. It gets everybody in town. It gets all of our summer help, all of our summer people, everything. It's not just on, oh, jeez, let's raise property taxes to come up with it. You don't have to raise property taxes to come up with it. There's other ways of doing it besides burdening 48% of all property in this town.
Thank you.
I'm getting curious. When I want to thank all you councilmen for reconsidering, I know the petition has not been certified, and I'm just kind of curious, do you have to wait the 30 days?
No.
It can be certified faster, so the election could be easier.
I'm not moving it up on purpose, that the attorney's doing the legal work.
I'm just kind of curious, I mean, to move it faster, you know, you guys were saying. I'm just wondering, it could be certified faster, so it could be.
It's going to be certified when she's done the legal work.
Yeah. So, yeah, we can ask them to speed it up. I know, everything I've seen leaves a clerk's desk like the next day. So it's, if there's any holdups, it's just their availability. So I don't, I don't know that it's incredibly complex or anything, so.
Yeah, maybe just to help, you know.
Yeah, we try to turn those things around, for sure.
You got this other one, I mean, I know you said that one was on the 12th, and then the other one was on the 23rd, I believe. And I believe the first two have already been certified, right?
No.
They have not.
Yeah.
Thank you again, sir.
Could you speak just a little closer to the mic? They can't hear.
I want to thank you for reconsidering and bringing this to a citywide vote. It wasn't an easy deal for you guys.
No.
I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank council for their actions tonight also. It was a good job. I would like to ask, though, I'm kind of unsure what it means for having something certified. I thought it was, I thought it was an election that had to be certified, is there?
Right, but petitions have to be certified.
Oh, okay, all right. Okay, petitions, all right. And I drew a blank, that's why I write things down and read them. I have something else, but I'll bring it up to staff. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Other audience participation? Okay, thank you. We've had a lot tonight, so. Council comments, I'll start with Councilman Lees.
Thank you, everybody, for showing up tonight. Obviously, we all have a lot more work to do, and you see a lot of youth cleared out, and I always appreciate everyone that shows up, but we always stick here for you guys. So if there's something you care about, please, please keep showing up and please keep coming around. Thank, yeah, thank you, Roseanne and Dean, Mr. Higgins, Moynihan Meyer, Ms. Grimwood, all, for all your stories, everything you had to say. Big congratulations to Scott and the hospital on our EMS services and all the volunteers that took part in this response. I wasn't here for it, but it sounded pretty incredible. And to everyone that put out a voter initiative, it, I, that was one thing I had to say when I advocated to not put marijuana ordinance to a vote, is that they can take the initiative. And it was, it was a surprisingly incredible initiative, what, throwing that many people together in five days. And I know, I know us reconsidering things makes us, I'm sure it makes us look like a volatile council. I feel like we're just trying to get it right for you guys, so keep coming around and helping us. Thank you.
Councilman Jones?
I just want to echo Councilman Lees's comments on audience participation and thanking everybody for turning out. And, yeah, just appreciate you guys' willingness to relook at these taxes. I think it's important. And I do think it's really important that we look into lot disposal versus lot development and hold people's feet to the fire on lots that have been sitting vacant or, you know, things that, you know, proposals that have changed. And I think it's, I think it would be really important for us to have some workshops or and develop, you know, a lot, a lot disposal versus lot development policy. And, yeah, thanks for putting up with me for another one.
Councilman Allison?
Yeah, I do thank everybody for coming. We need to put a couple of controversial items on every one of our agendas so we get more people joining us here in the council chambers. Just like to point out that, you know, I understand with the lot disposal process may not be too good, but it's much better now than it was when we, when we sold with deeds of trust. Those deeds of trust were junk from the beginning, and I said that when the planner at the time decided that was the way they wanted to go, that it was going to be junk, and it was. And fortunately, we don't do that anymore. Their feet are held a little bit tighter now with the lease, with the option to purchase. They have to do their project before they can actually purchase and own the land. So that changes that dynamics just a little bit. Just keep that in mind as we're discussing it. But thanks, staff, for the work that they do. And I know sometimes we make them do a lot of extra work that they might not have had to do had we got it right the first time, but that's why we're all here. And like to especially throw out a congratulations or kudos or whatnot to the Iceworm Committee for the job that they did, or they do every year, organizing that festival that, you know, they've stretched a couple-day festival out into eight or nine days now, and I know they work on it all year. So that's, that's our goal, is to keep improving those festivals and having, having more of them. So thanks for the work that they do.
Thank you. So online, Councilman Burton?
Yeah, I want to start off talking about what Tom Carpenter said about land disposal and letting people change their plans. And I couldn't agree more with that statement. We've got some lots over on the Southville where, you know, we, we had a lot of different bidders that submitted proposals and plans changed or didn't happen at all or were without appropriate intent. And he's exactly right that for us to change course down the road, disenfranchising the other people that were not successful on those proposals. So that's point one. When we, when we got to Lot 3, Block 5 tonight, I want to be really clear that I'm really supportive of the idea. And though I don't believe that I would want to get rid of that piece of property, you know, we've already moved on that road, my recommendation, I think, was a little bit misunderstood by Mr. Jones when we were talking about not having a recommendation from planning and zoning. I know it's going to be recommended. What I was saying is that having them go through a, basically the RFP process that we used to do, even if they're the sole bidder, makes them, you know, put some numbers on paper and adds essentially another level of, I guess, a reality check on making sure they understand what all is involved in this, not just a drawing on a piece of paper and a plan, because it's all great. It's just making sure that they understand it before they follow through with it. That was my only concern there. So just wanted to make sure that was clarified, because I am supportive of the idea in general. And other than that, I just want to thank you all for coming out. We're still going to have work to do if these taxes are repealed. We'll see how that shakes out. I hope you keep coming to the meetings afterwards, because the ideas or solutions can sometimes come from somebody outside the table of seven people.
Councilman Beadle?
I'm sure you all want to get home. So thank you all for coming out and testifying, and council for all of your hard work, and have a good night.
Okay, thank you. I was hoping you'd stay on for six more minutes so we can see if we get that four-hour cutoff at 10 o'clock.
We got a zigzag.
Councilman Gardner?
Yeah, also, I just thank everybody for showing up. And the more involvement we get through the whole process instead of just at the end, the easier it is on all of us and the less time we spend arguing with each other, and we can spend more time moving ahead and trying to take Corrova where we want to take it. So anyway, thank you all for coming out. We will see you next meeting.
Okay, we have one item for executive session, and so I'll wait for a motion from council. City business.